This is great. All of us are here. Um, I'd like to call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting for May one, twenty twenty-three. This month is Women's Month. Ladies? Okay.
I'm not sharing my house every month.
Thank you. Right, Tricia?
Do we have a men's month?
No.
The thirteenth. The thirteenth month.
You're on every day, I think. That you allow us to at least have a month.
Hey, did you recognize that laugh? That was your dad goes, Skippy, you're right on that.
All right. Thank you all so much for being here. And now we're going to stand and say the pledge in a moment of silence. Thank you. You have the agenda before you. We need an adoption.
Madam Chair, just one change.
Yes.
V dot contacted me about an hour or two ago, and Mr. Thornton, who would be coming to do the update, was not feeling well, so he will not be attending this evening.
Okay.
So we, so we could scratch, scratch.
Scratch, see.
And are they going to reschedule? Do you know? Because there's definitely.
He'll be back in April. They, yeah, he said he would come back in April. Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the agenda with the changes so made.
All right. We have a motion by Mr. Sheridan and second by Mr. Brian, that we second the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye. I would like to tell the audience that we had a leak, a water leak across the street, and it affected our restrooms here. You can still use the restroom, but don't be alarmed that you can't flush. Thank you. Now's the special time. We have a special time to recognize Mr. Ed Zimmer. So would we all come down here in the front? And Mr. Zimmer, would you come forward?
All right. So I will go ahead and get started. So one, uh, special thanks to Mr. Zimmer. In appreciation of your ten years of dedicated service to Fluvana County as a planning commissioner from January twenty thirteen to January twenty twenty-three, serving as vice chair from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty, presented by the Fluvana County Board of Supervisors, we'd like to just, uh, you know, give you our appreciation and thanks for all you've done on the planning commission over these years. And I, I know you've been a great benefit, and I know maybe one of your colleagues that's been on the planning commission for a while would like to say some words as well. Yeah.
I can see he prepped you for that.
Yeah, it's been a pleasure to work with you. We really appreciate your input. We're gonna really miss you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chairman, could I make a comment on Mr. Zimmer?
Yeah.
This is a little bit out of my usual role, but I, I feel like I'll say this. I, I have had the pleasure of, of working with Mr. Zimmer the whole time he's been on the planning commission, and don't forget the Board of Zoning P S. And I will say that based on my upcoming forty-nine years of experience, uh, I would consider him to be an absolutely model of, a model member of both of those bodies. We are, I personally am very sorry to lose his service.
Okay. All right. Now we will have our county administrators report.
Yep. Madam Chair, just have a few things to report. Um, so one, uh, the Treasurer's Office, um, she's got a new employee, Bonnie Scott, uh, started as Deputy, Deputy Treasurer two in the Treasurer's Office. Um, she started February twenty-seventh. So I'd like to thank her, and then we're happy to have her on board in the Treasurer's Office. I'm sure Linda will be glad to get someone in there and get trained before tax season starts in June. Um, just kind of a reminder again about the Fluvana County Tire Drop Off and Hazardous Waste coming up Saturday, March twenty-fifth at Pleasant Grove. Um, again, safe disposal tires, gasoline, paints, thinner solvents. If you have any questions, please call the Fluvana County Parks and Rec at four three four five eight nine twenty sixteen. Um, the, the waste collection, the hazardous waste collection will be from ten AM to two PM on that Saturday. Entire collection will be from ten AM to twelve PM. And again, you know, arrive early. There is limited collection capacity. And, um, you know, once, once the capacity is met, then, then we may potentially need to close it down. So, uh, like I said, just having that in, in conjunction with, uh, making sure that none of these hazardous materials end up in our, uh, side of the road, streams and rivers. Um, and then Fluvana Louisa Housing Foundation on February tenth had their fundraiser at Bandage Ridge. Um, Tom Payne, um, for, was also a former board member and is also a Fluvana Louisa Housing Foundation volunteer, received recognition for outstanding service managing ramp installations in both counties. And you can see some pictures from the event. Uh, you can see Ms. Booker, uh, down in the bottom left-hand picture. And so it was a good, good event for, for the Fluvana Louisa Housing Foundation. And just some upcoming meetings. So, um, so next week, March eighth, we have our, um, budget work session at five thirty PM, which will not be in this space. It'll be in the Morris Room at the County Administration Building. Again, that's starting at five thirty PM. And we'll be, uh, there'll be plenty of time to dig, dig deep into the details in the budget, and we'll, we should have some updated taxable values from, from the Commissioner revenue at that point. And then there may be some additional changes. Um, some, uh, some representatives from Fluvana County Public Schools will be attending as well. They actually, um, they actually decided to, to tweak their, their normal meeting time for the school board, uh, next week. So, uh, so certainly Dr. Gratz and Brenda Gillum can attend the budget work session. Um, and then the following week after that, March fifteenth, at five PM, we have another budget work session, although it's a, you know, a shorter period of time to kind of finalize things and, and, and get set up for our, um, fiscal year twenty-four budget and, and the actual kind of, uh, calendar year tax rate for advertising that's associated with that budget. Um, and then it's, um, at seven PM that same day, we'll have our regular meeting. And again, on the fifteenth, those meetings will be here in the, uh, Performing Arts Center. So we'll have to answer any questions that the board members have.
Any questions? Okay. If not, then we will have our first public comments. Would you please come to the podium here and give your name and address? And direct your comments to the board. Do we have anyone who would like to speak?
And, and Madam Chair, maybe we'll want to add, um, if, if there's individuals here for, for different.
For the board or commission, we will have time. Yes. We will have time for those individuals to speak. Anyone would like to speak to the board? If not, then I will close the first public comment. Yes.
Are you, you want to speak about the board?
No, this won't be the time. You'll have a time for, yeah.
Oh, Free Hill, yeah. She wanted to speak. Yeah. Yes.
I'm sorry. I'm gonna re, I'm gonna reopen it for comments from, for Free Hill. I guess.
Sorry, I wasn't sure. So I wanted to make sure. My name is Loretta Johnson Morgan. I live at eighteen Lake Road, Troy, Virginia. Um, I'm here to speak out about the ownership of Free Hill to my church, Columbia Baptist Church. Um, I grew up in Columbia as a young girl. My family still lives there, and I got baptized in that church. And for the longest, I thought we owned the church and the cemetery. Because me as a little girl, and I'm gonna smack my hand, I used to go in there and I run and hide and do everything else in that cemetery as a young person. But you couldn't pay me anything right now to do that. But, um, I am asking that the board give us ownership of that cemetery. We have been taking care of that cemetery for a while. And I think we've been doing it under the assumption that we own the cemetery, but then I found out that the town of Columbia actually owned the cemetery. So I don't know if we were really trespassing, doing what we were doing there, but we held a cleanup session at the church last year where we invited members in the community to come down and help us clean up all the debris. There is so much debris there of fallen trees and shrubberies, and we manually went out there. Columbia Baptist Church members and people of the community to try to clean it. Now, I personally is there because I think I have ancestors there. Um, I did notice quite a few graves that are there. And I think it should be preserved, the cemetery. And I asked that if the county does not want to give our church the ownership, that I implore you all to at least clean up the cemetery, get it in a presentable order so we can preserve the bodies that are there. So that's basically why I'm here, because I just think it's a waste to have that cemetery just sit there and let everything just grow up on it, and no one really take an ownership of it. So that's why I'm here. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Morgan. Anyone else want to speak on the cemetery?
My name is Nadine Armstrong, and I am just here to support the Columbia Baptist Church members. Uh, I also have some ancestors that are buried down in Columbia. And I am working with them on finding the names of the ancestors that are buried down there. And I have put together a little pamphlet here with some names that I've already found of ancestors that are buried there. And I have this pamphlet here for you to look at if you'd like to. And it shows the people that I've already found. And I also have in the back what we've already done at Oak Hill, which, uh, in case some of you aren't familiar with it. It's a list of all the people that we've already found at the Oak Hill Cemetery in West Bottom. And that's a hundred, around a hundred and ten people that we've already found that are buried at Oak Hill. So we're also trying to do the same thing in Columbia. So it's, it's a very rewarding experience for us to find our ancestors. And, uh, for Columbia to own this property would be a very beneficial thing. So like I said, I am just here to help, you know, help them. And like I say, I also have some ancestors buried there. So.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Armstrong.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments?
Good to see you all once again. And now, thank you all for allowing me to come last time and speak before you. And thank you all for allowing me to come and speak today. My name is Bruce Bowling. I'm the pastor of Columbia Baptist Church. I'm also here speaking about Free Hill. And I believe the last time I was here, I talked about the rich history that I've found here in Fluvana County, and this blows my mind with all this great history. And so I also want to continue for the great history to be known that's here in Fluvana County with the Free Hill Cemetery. You know, as Sister Loretta spoke, and she spoke about the cleanup day and how much work went into it. Uh, Mike was there. He helped out quite a bit, and some other folks in the community came out to help clean up. And I was just amazed of how many graves that they are there. And then how over the years, things have built up and covered and kind of hidden these graves. And just one quick story. And so I hope I'm telling it right. I don't want to tell it wrong. But while we was cleaning, there was this, I'm not even sure what it was, looked to me like some green big brush there. And so somebody was cleaning, and one of the members happened to recognize it was their grandparents and aunt's grave there. And so my concern is that I don't want that to happen again, where we don't know some of the, quite a few of the graves, but the ones that we do don't get covered up, you know, years later. And so what we're proposing, we're willing to do, if you also do so, give us the cemetery, that we would do the upkeep of the cemetery ourselves, that we have volunteers, we have members that are willing to do that. And my, also, I would say this too as well, and I believe Sister Loretta said as well. If that's not the case, then myself, I would say, I'm in expectation of whomever owns it to kind of upkeep it, because we can't keep on covering up history, can keep up, keep on covering up ancestries of folks that are buried there, that, you know, they want to come by and pay their respects. And so we want that to be shown, and we are willing to do that. We're willing to take care of the cemetery ourselves and with help of others. So then that history can be preserved, and then the ancestors that are being buried there won't be forgotten. So thank you all for your consideration, and thank you all for your time.
Thank you, Pastor. Anyone else would like to comment on anything? Seeing anyone online?
I don't see anyone unmuting at this point. I don't see anyone.
Okay. So no one online. All right. I'm going to close the first comment.
And, and, and.
Yes.
And maybe just for the audience's, um, benefit, there will be a, um, agenda item under, uh, tab D, a presentation about the Free Hill Cemetery, about the comments that were just made a little later in the meeting.
All right. Thank you. We don't have, uh, public hearing this afternoon. We have an Action Matters County participate, participation in Virginia Oprah settlement. This is our second settlement, Mr. Payne.
This, the board will remember the first time we went through this. This is the, there were, there have been a long series of lawsuits against the distributors and manufacturers of certain opioids. Uh, those have been increasingly, with, with increasing frequency, have been settled. And the, uh, this involves the entire United States. So it's, it's a big job, as you can imagine, to get all these settlements done. If you recall, earlier in, uh, in October of two thousand twenty-one, you all authorized the, that the county participate in the settlements. And the effect of it is that there's a very highly organized elaborate, um, structure for distributing the proceeds of these settlements. Uh, at that, at, at the time you approved our participation before, we didn't know exactly how much money the county was going to get. Uh, we didn't know how much money would be available, because it, it depended on the number of participants and, and the outcome of some certain, uh, certain litigants who were not settling and that sort of thing. That, that is, as I'll mention in a minute, that's become more clear. But it's, it's still not entirely clear, because this is a second, if you will, tranche of, of settlements against additional, uh, additional, uh, producers and distributor of, of opioids.
And so, and three large pharmacies still, three large retail pharmacies.
Well, I, I was considering them as distributors, but, but yes, the wholesale and retail distributors. Um, and, um, so it's second verse same as the first, essentially. The, the procedure that's going to go, have to go through is, is the resolution you passed in November of two, of two thousand twenty-one. We have an additional resolution that the Attorney General has, has requested. Attorney General's been supervising this settlement. Uh, and Attorney General's has, has prepared, uh, form resolutions. We've simply met, adopted them, adapted them for the county's use for you to approve to, uh, participate in the second, if you will, tranche of settlements. Um, that's what the resolution is before you. I, you probably remember enough that I, I don't feel like going into a great deal more detail unless you want me to. But that will put us on track to participate with the second tranche of, um, of settlements, which will involve more money for the county.
And, and, and just a couple of things to add to it. Just kind of in addition to what Mr. Payne said, so Commonwealth actually has created also an opioid abatement authority kind of throughout this process.
General Assembly did.
Well, yeah, that, that kind of, uh, administers a program and then provides guidance to localities. And, and as Mr. Payne said, um, the second, the second settlement, we don't really know what that is, since it's kind of a new thing, and, and we're, we're waiting to see who the participants are going to be. But for the first settlement, the, the chart on the screen here shows basically, this is what we've received from the, um, opioid abatement authority. These are the funds that the county will be receiving over the years from the opioid abatement authority, totaling somewhere in the neighborhood of three hundred and ten thousand dollars. Now again, this first tranche was a two hundred and sixty billion national lawsuit. And, you know, it's split up throughout, you know, different, you know, states and everything. The second settlement is a twenty billion dollar lawsuit. So I mean, so there'll be, we don't know what the exact amount is, but there'll be some, some dollar amount, maybe somewhat similar. The one thing that we do have to, to keep in mind, there are very, um, very specific eligible uses that we're going to be working through to bring to the board at a future date to really kind of show what the funds can be used for. Certainly, the biggest piece of it is, is, is to offset education, opioid abatement, opioid addiction, you know, those that have, you know, fallen victim to opioids over the years. Um, but again, there's a whole slew of eligible uses that we're going to be going through. I, I know, um, through drug, uh, drug court, we have the drug court program. We've talked briefly about it. I'm sure, you know, Sheriff Hess and, and, and those that kind of oversee some of this, that, you know, from the courts and, 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 you know, the Commonwealth Attorney's Office will be coming up with some, some recommendations for the board at some point. But again, this, as Mr. Payne said, the second settlement is just to kind of get us in queue for some, some additional funding to put to use for, for some type of opioid, uh, remediation.
Yeah, I suspect that the amount of this second settlement will be probably on the order of magnitude as the first. We, we don't know what the, what the real figures will be. Now, let me add one thing, and that is that we received, uh, information, it was today, um, by email from the Attorney General, that our, the funds given to us under the first tranche, some of the money had been withheld because there were certain expenses that hadn't become entirely clear. They couldn't account for them initially. Those have been clarified, and we stand to get additional money for settlements as well. The same, it's not, not more than we expected, but the, the cash will be there at hand.
And, and, and this Milton sent me a text a little while ago, that the county has actually received just a little shy of fifty thousand dollars to date so far. And again, you'll see it, it's, it goes on for quite some time, uh, over the years.
There's one other aspect that, that of this, that I'm, I'm not asking to take action on this, this other issue, but Mr. Dahl, Dahl and I were talking about it. At the time the first settlement came up, if we decided it was appropriate for me to be the, the, uh, touch point with the, the settlement management facilities. Since I'm not going to be county attorney after the end of April, uh, we have, we would suggest that the board take action, and needn't be tonight, but take action to, to relieve me and appoint Mr. Dahl in my place.
Okay. All right. Um, any questions from board members? Maybe see the resolution. Yes, we have to vote on the resolution.
Yep.
Um, can you, I, I, I believe in reading the resolution, so everybody can hear it. This is not very long.
Yes, no, it's not.
Yeah. A resolution of the Fluvana County Virginia Board of Supervisors approving of the county's participation in the proposed settlement of Oprah related claims against T-Vale, uh, Allergan, Walmart, Walgreens, CVS, and their related corporate entities, and directing the county attorney and all the county's outside counsel to execute the documents necessary to effete the county's participation in the settlement. Whereas the Oprah and epidemic that has caused thousands of human lives across the country also impacts the Commonwealth of Virginia and its counties and cities, including the county of Fluvana, adversely impacting the delivery of emergency medical law enforcement, criminal justice, mental health, and substance abuse services and other services by Fluvana's various departments and agencies. And whereas the Commonwealth of Virginia and its counties and cities, including Fluvana, have been required and will continue to be required to allocate substantial taxpayer dollars, resources, staff energy and time to address the damage the Oprah epidemic has caused and continues to cause the citizens of the Commonwealth of Virginia. And whereas settlement proposals have been negotiated that will cause T-Vale, uh, Allergan, Walmart, Walgreen, and CVS to pay billions of dollars nationwide to resolve Oprah-related claims against them. And whereas the county has approved and adopted the Virginia Oprah Abatement Fund and settlement allocated for memorandum of understanding, the Virginia MOU, and affirms that these pending settlements with T-Vale, Allergan, Walmart, CVS, and Walgreens shall be considered settlements that are subject to the Virginia MOU and shall be administered and allocated in the same manner as the Oprah settlement entered into previously with Oprah distributor McKees, McKeeson, Cardinal Health, and American Source Bergen, an opioid manufacturer, um, Jason Pharmaceutical, and whereas the county of Fluvana has reviewed the available information about the proposed settlement and has recommended that the county participate in the settlement in order to recover its share of the funds that the settlement would provide. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fluvana County Virginia Board of Supervisors, this first day of March twenty twenty-three approves of the county's participation in the proposed settlement of Oprah-related claims against T-Vale, Allergan, Walmart, Walgreen, CVS, and their related corporate entities, and directs the county attorney and other county's outside counsel to execute the documents necessary to effete the county's participation in the settlements, included the required release of claims against settling entities. And now we need to read the motion. Um, and then we will check all those people who agree. The motion is on the board.
I move the Board of Supervisors approve the attached resolution approving the county's participation in the proposed settlement of opioid-related claims against certain entities named in the resolution and directing the county attorney to execute the documents necessary to effectuate the county's participation in the settlements.
All right. We have a motion for Mrs. Eager and a second for Mr. O'Brien. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. We have, uh, next is Action. No, I'm not at Action Matters. Appointments. We have board commission and committee appointments. So we have, if do we have, if we have individuals here, we're here to speak to the planning commission. Um, we would like for you to come forward, give your name and address and address the board. Do we have, I think we have two people, Carolyn Lay, Carolyn Lay and Loretta Moore.
We've already seen Loretta as an amazing public speaker. I don't, I don't follow her just with that one.
Okay.
I'm I'm Carolyn Lay. I live in the Columbia District. I've lived in Fluvanna for about fifteen years. And we've raised our teenage son here. He just graduated high school. So this county's been an absolute blessing to us. So when I heard Mr. Zimmer was stepping down, I went ahead and put in my application. Planning is something I've always been interested in. I'm, I was raised in a family where my father was first Chamber of Commerce President, and then later in my teen years, he was Director of Economic Development. Maybe I'm daddy's little girl, but I've always been fascinated with it. In my young working life, I had a real estate license. And I ended up getting hired into the high-tech industry. So I gave up my license and I I just took, we, my husband and I lived in a very frugal manner. And we went ahead and bought real estate. And at one point, we went ahead and built a subdivision in Raleigh, North Carolina. It should have been an easy, it was a small subdivision. It started off five or six lots. I think it ended up smaller with some concessions and stuff. But it should have gone quickly, but it ended up taking five years because we learned that with the hurricane problems that Raleigh had, they wanted to start opening up the city and having more of a grid pattern and and such like that. So we learned that it would really affect a historical neighborhood behind us. So we we worked extra long with our neighbors and with the planning commission and with our city board of supervisors there to get solutions and concessions. And we ended up winning the subdivision, which was a win for the neighborhood because it it kind of stopped in that one street. At least it didn't break up the neighborhood behind us. News trucks used to park in front of our house and say unusual story. Developers agree with the neighbors. So it was, it was a long, it was a long process, but it was a joyful process. We made almost no money, but we learned a lot. So between between that and some of my other career things, I I heard people talking about as we opened our history here in Fluvanna, we have an immensely rich history. So part of my belief in serving in something like the planning commission is to honor the rural nature of our county and to honor our history. And I would love to see some way that the places like Columbia, places like Fork Union, that are our main streets, our hubs of our villages can be once again revitalized and and central to to life here in our county. I I very much enjoy the planning process. I've, over the years, participated or spoken up about it. I do believe that it's a mixture of art and science. It's the, you know, the studies and planning and all of that. But there's an art to working with the master plan, working with what your community wants, working with what the developers are trying to get. You're listening to everyone. You're trying to look at code. And then you're trying to find, you know, the best best paths forward. And I think I have some skills that that would lend to that. So I look forward to hearing from you all and thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Okay.
Yes, I would get tired of seeing me come up here. But I'm Loretta Johnson Morgan. I am a lifetime resident of Fluvanna County. I was born here. I went to school here. My family is here. My mother's family is here. My dad's family is here. I'm going to say this. As a lifetime resident, I am invested in Fluvanna County. Fluvanna County back in the day used to be a thriving county. When I lived in Columbia as a young girl, you could walk down the road, you see stores and people and shops. Then when we moved to Fork Union, there was the academy, there was laundromat, there was grocery store, there was all kinds of businesses that we have in the county. Right now, I don't see that anymore, and I don't see the county as thriving. And I'm trying to figure out what's the best way to help you all understand what is needed in this county. Yes, the county does need to grow, need some growth. We need some business. But we still need to commit to the residents here who've been here all their life and keep the rural aspect of the county. I know there are things that needs to be done in the county, and there are things that has been, has been happening with the comprehensive plan and all that. But I really think that being on the planning commission, I can help facilitate what is actually need here for the people in this community. Again, I'm invested in this county. I want to see us flourish. But I also am invested in the people who live in this county, meaning myself and my parents, my grandparents, and my family and my friends. I want this county to grow, but there has to be a right way for us to grow. There's a whole lot of infrastructure that needs to be brought back into this county with water and roads and electricity and solar power and all that stuff. But we need to find a way to bring that together and make Fluvanna County vital again. So that's why I want to serve on the planning commission. My husband moved here from Blacksburg. My daughter lived in Ashburn. I've seen different parts of the world how Christiansburg looked, Blacksburg looked, how Ashburn looks, how Louisa looked, how Fluvanna County looks. We're a little bit behind. I hate to say it, but we are. So I am here to hopefully serve on that planning commission to help enhance that comprehensive plan, to look at the county and see how we can grow as a county, because I don't want people to move away. I see a lot of young kids, they don't want to stay here anymore because there's nothing to do. Or they're moving, people are moving out of Fluvanna, moving into Louisa because there are things. We need to make sure that there are some amenities here in the county for the people who live here to keep the people here. We also need to thrive in getting people to come into the county. But what do we have in Fluvanna County that people want to come in and see and do? There's not much here. So we need to do a lot of work in this county to get this done. So I have dedicated myself in trying to help the county. I retired from the University of Virginia and the State of Virginia with thirty-five years of service as a computer application engineer. After I retired, I started working as a volunteer here with the Fluvanna County Sheriff's Office, and I'm still here as a volunteer in police service. I'm constantly looking for ways to help people, not just the county, but people. I'm helping the senior citizens here with our triad program. I even have organizations who is helping small businesses here, making people aware of who these small businesses. But these small businesses are not going to stay here if we're not offering anything to them. I'm also currently serving on the EDA. I'm looking for ways to help the county. And I hope that y'all will see that in me that I am here because I am invested in Fluvanna County. So I'm asking for you all to vote and select me. I mean, I'm just, it's a good candidate as a young lady who just stayed here. If I'm selected, that's fine. And if I'm not, that's fine too. But I'm going to continue to fight for Fluvanna County because it is my home. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. All right, so now the board need to discuss, we've had two.
Do I have the region ten?
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I was going to do them first. I was going back to region ten. If you want to do it all at one time.
I would rather just do the one and then do the other.
I agree.
Yeah, so I want to, um, I knew what was on the agenda, so we will do just the planning commission first, and then we will have the region ten.
Lieutenant Chairman, before you start your discussion, one thing that that gives me a little concern about Ms. Johnson Morgan. She's obviously very energetic and would be an entirely appropriate member, I think. But her membership on the Economic Development Authority gives me concern because the the statute regarding the qualifications for for membership on the planning commission, it's in section fifteen point two, it's twenty-two twelve, appear to limit the local offices that a planning commission member can hold. It's, it's, I say they appear to because it's phrased in the, in the, sort of the obverse. It doesn't say you can't be a member of the planning commission if you do this. It says if you're a member of the planning commission, you can also do that. And the two offices mentioned are member of the administrative staff of the county and the member of the board supervisors. Mrs. Eager is a good example of that. She is also a member of the planning commission. So we've done it before. The ambiguity is that that it doesn't say you you can't be a member of this and that. What I'm suggesting is that if the board chooses to to pick Ms. Johnson Morgan, and I'm not trying to discourage you from doing that, but it may require her to resign from her position on the on the the Economic Development Authority. So please don't think I'm lobbying in favor or against either candidate.
But it's not clear because I know that there's certain, and I can't quote, I know there's certain positions that you can't do and serve in one, you can't do the other. And I didn't, and I thought about that, but I didn't go and really research it.
The language.
The language isn't very clear.
The language is not at all.
It says appear, so.
The statute actually reads, one member of the commission may be a member of the governing body of the locality, and one member may be a member of the administrative branch of government of the locality. Now, again, it doesn't say if you do, if you have another position, that disqualifies you. But I think the implication of the statute is to have this be citizens who are who are not otherwise engaged in county's business.
So you don't have anybody overwhelming or having too many voices and too many.
Right. So I'm inclined to take a very conservative view of things like this because I'm sorry to say this, but procedural defects of any kind are subject to challenge. And I wouldn't want to see good work of the planning commission challenged on the basis of of pure technicality like this. And I'm just raising the issue for your consideration and 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 for the applicant's consideration too.
Correct me if I'm wrong, the way I had taken it was that there's a potential conflict or double dip in in the effect that a person could have on something because something could go in front of the planning commission and the EDA. The same item, correct?
That's a little different issue.
Okay.
That's more like a conflict of interest.
What, that's, maybe I was wrong. That's what I had taken it as, is I thought it potentially had conflict.
The Conflict of Interest Act is going to cover that. If if there is impact.
And you can, you can recuse yourself from it, from a conflict.
I think, I think the, the, as I read the statutes in their entirety, I read this as being an attempt to ensure broader participation. And and again, I'm not telling you, I'm not absolutely sure that that if this would prohibit her from serving. But it may well be that 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 taking a very conservative view of this, if I were taking a very conservative view of this, which I'm likely to do, I think it would it would it would mandate that you can have one or the other, but you can't have both. Now, whether she can do things other than than the EDA, I'm not commenting on, I'm only commenting on the planning commission because it's a it's a, it's one of a few entities where there's there where the situation is likely to arise. Board Zoning Bill is the same, same way. And it says a member of the planning commission can be a member of the Board Zoning. Now, it's a different situation, but that's an example.
Well, it sounds like we just need to ask Ms. Johnson Morgan if she is selected, whether or not she would resign from, or whether she has a preference for staying on.
Come up here, Ms. Morgan.
Authority.
Well, to my understanding, my term on the EDA ends in June of this year. So if I am elected on the planning commission, I have no problem whatsoever of resigning from the EDA and serving on the planning commission.
That's all set.
So. Okay.
Yeah, so I mean, if that is the case, then we would just, we would have to appoint someone for the outstanding term of the EDA if she was selected.
Okay, thank you. All right, so we bring it back to the board now and for any more discussion so we can make that selection between Mrs. Carolyn Lay and Mrs. Loretta Johnson Morgan.
I would say that and I talked to Loretta today and and Carolyn. Both great candidates and the reason that both of them want to serve, much of it fits much into my mindset and thoughts about the the county's future and concerns for the county's future. With, I believe that with the conflict that we're talking about here, potential conflict. And with the experience that Carolyn has had doing a subdivision and some of the experiences with the planning commission and so on, I just don't see where we serve a purpose in disrupting the EDA with somebody who's been giving great service there. And why not have them both serve Fluvanna? And have them on each of those two committees or committee and commission or authority and commission.
Anybody else?
Well, I I agree with Chris. The more people you have to to serve in the different committees, I think it's a good thing. And I've known Carolyn a long time, and I know that about her experience with the planning commission in Raleigh. And that's kind of how I got involved with local politics because I had an experience with the planning commission. And so anyway, that that's what I think.
Okay. Anyone else?
You know, I think they're both good candidates. I think that the strength of, you know, Mrs. Morgan's, Johnson Morgan's longstanding family history in Columbia, since it is as I think she aptly put it, you know, focusing on trying to improve the quality for the people. Is is a really strong statement and a powerful statement. And I I see that passion in her. I I don't want to say that there isn't that kind of passion in the planning commission right now or not, but I I just think that there's a certain amount of strength that comes from from her positions from that standpoint that would make me want to select her over Ms. Lay. But again, I think they would both do a fine job, so. That's my opinion. And 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 of course, it is the Columbia District.
Well, I mean, it is the Columbia District, and I wish that sometimes somebody would make this easy. And we'd have one candidate that we know we want and the other candidate we. Yeah, this one's just a little bit better. And this one, I've known Ms. Lay for, I guess, ten years now. And she is involved. A go-getter. The other one used to chase me around high school and beat me up.
Well, that's all.
Think I still got a knot back here from where she, where I said something I shouldn't have or something, and she whacked me in the back of the head. I feel the pain for her husband. You know, the whole time I'm sitting there, I'm going, we got two great people, and we got two boards and commissions, and I think we end up filling one or the other with with the other. And I don't.
I'm trying, when you say two, two commissions.
Well.
Organization.
Organization.
Authority.
Authority and the commission, the planning commission. Well, I mean, I think if if one's on, if one's on one, one's on the other. I know that there are two talkative people. There are two people that will communicate with one another. So I mean, I'm I am fine with either one, to be honest with you.
The only challenge I would say is that in terms of the EDA, we normally go through the non-bait process to see whatever candidate.
And that's what I'm saying. It would be that, you know, I could walk away tonight and be perfectly fine with putting one on one and one on the other. Um, but that'll be done in June. Yeah, I think she said the term ends in June. So.
I would like to go ahead.
Well, Ms. Ms. Booker.
Oh, yeah. I was going to say, and I've I've known Loretta since her teenage years, but also I know of what she has done in the county. When we had the COVID, she was the leader in bringing vaccinations to this county twice. Set it up, did all of that. She also did Small Business Fair, which she bought in forty. She also did small business fair, which she bought in forty some businesses to the high school, and I think she has another one planned for this April. Um, I do not know um, Mrs. Lay, but I I listen to her intensely, and I I think I know her just by her describing what she had she has done. So um so I I know Loretta Morgan more than I know Mrs. Lay, but we have five of us here, so.
Well, I I I think we need to ask one question. We asked Loretta if she would step down.
Yeah.
If she was elected. Ms. Lay, would you be interested in economic development if Ms. Morgan was? So I mean, I I think saying that, asking that question is something irrelevant also.
Okay.
I I but I I'm just thinking, why this, why? Why disrupt and make change when we have one on the E D A and we have qualified person to step into the planning commission? Um, not that Loretta's not either, but again, with the subject isn't experienced and so on, why disrupt that and if if the goal is to have one on each, why make a swap when we already have one of those in place?
Yeah. Yeah, it takes a lot of effort uh, to get up to speed on the planning commission. And um, Mrs. Morgan is very involved in the community doing, like you just said. Uh employment fairs and she she's a wonderful person for for Flavanna, and we've all appreciate you very much. Um, and I think that uh, she'll continue to work so hard for Flavanna because she loves it so much. So I would uh I I would like to put Carolyn on the planning commission and give her an opportunity to serve as well. And uh so I, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that um, I don't think Ms. Morgan would have come forward for the planning commission. If she thought she couldn't do both, but then we're finding out that maybe there's a quirk there, and I'm not sure we really know if that's really.
Pandora's box.
Yeah.
Don't want to risk.
Oh, yeah.
Opening it.
Yeah.
I just don't see a reason to do so.
Well, are there limits on the E D A?
As far as we we.
If you can serve consec- consecutively or not.
No, no, I don't think so. I think we've had people on there.
I don't think they can serve forever, and they serve two times.
I'm, well, I mean, we've had, we have, up until a while, we had some very long standing individuals on the E D A.
Bigs are on there for ten years.
Yeah. I mean, you know, certainly, certainly the one thing to keep in mind, I mean, if if Ms. Johnson Morgan was selected for the E D A, I mean, like we've been doing with other positions, we'll put it, we would put it out for thirty days and and whoever submits for that, we would then bring that that's candidates back for the board of Athens, for the board.
I think it's a little unfair to to cast um, you know, the fact that she belongs in, has been serving on it successfully. Um, and to make that a de facto, so I mean, I really think, you know, it just comes down to the votes and um you know, that's that's what it boils down to, so um, you know. I think we're, we all recognize that they're both good candidates. Uh, it sounds like Ms. Eager made a motion for Mrs. Lay. I don't know if she did or did not, but um uh, if you haven't, I'd be happy to make one for Mrs. Morgan.
I was thinking it sounded like a motion, but I wasn't sure.
No, we have a motion. We have a you have one that you put on.
But but uh, but again, if I I would always give that one to the Columbia representative, so.
I am.
Mm-hmm. We've done that. We've usually do that.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know that.
And I've got to sit here and make that decision. Thanks.
Yeah. It's hard. I understand.
It's.
Um, oh, did I make the motion? Are we all sure about that?
No, I don't think you ever made a motion.
I don't think she officially made a motion. I don't.
Then I'd like, I moved the board of supervisors. Approve. What? Are you making the motion?
Yes.
But we don't have anything.
That's, it doesn't have to be, but he.
Yeah.
You want to do it.
I was just wondering technically if that's what we.
No.
No.
I got.
It's it's standard. It's a preference of the supervisor.
Because I think in Fork Union's case, I made the motion last year for the planning commission.
It it's, I would say it's customary for where there's a district department to have that that supervisor.
Yeah.
Make the motion, but it's not, it's not a matter of law.
Policy, yeah.
Well, I move the board of supervisors approve the following board commissioner committee appointment. If I say any meaning money mo out loud, do not lie. One thing caught my attention, and I've just known it, and it is nothing. I struggle with these decisions. Ms. Lay is super intelligent. Ms. Morgan's a lifelong resident that uh, nominate Loretta Johnson Morgan.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Sheridan. And a second by Mr. Bryant and Mr. Loretta Johnson Morgan. Be placed on the planning commission for the Columbia District. All in favor?
Right.
Uh.
Anyone oppose?
Aye.
Okay, chair vote, aye. So we have three to two. And Ms. Loretta Morgan, welcome to the planning commission.
So what do we do about the E D A now? Do we immediate, does she immediately have to resign?
She'll she'll have to qualify as a member of the planning commission, and if she's going to do it, that's when she 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 should she should resign. I would say resign promptly, so that that it can be filled.
Yeah, as soon as uh, I would recommend that if if that's the case, she she submit a letter to the to the county um just as she did for, probably to myself, to to go ahead and put that resignation and whatever that affected it, I probably make it effective immediately, immediately, and then this way, the county would then have the E D A um opening out there for thirty days, and then we would look to refill that position for the unexpired term.
Please put in application too.
All right. Okay, thank you. The next one is Region Ten Community Service Board. Austin Baker and Leslie Woodfark. Um, is Mr. Austin Baker here? No. Okay.
I say that, I don't, I'm not sure, I I'm not sure who I'm I'm the baker is.
Yeah.
Point him out, but.
So we we would have to look at his uh, resume.
I can pull him up if you want.
And. And um.
I'm still.
Okay.
Still be listening, but I got to speak with the pastor.
Oh, okay. All right.
Did you, you all see this?
Yeah, we've we've seen, I've read that and um and um and then Leslie Haskins. Now Leslie has been on appointed to two boards in the past. Is she still on the um, Java Advisory Council? Has she?
Ms. Harris is looking, she's currently on.
On the. John, and he was on the Java Advisory Council.
Yeah.
And I don't know.
Yeah, she didn't list on here what board she's on.
Yeah.
Oh, it says it right here. Just read it.
I know it. Yeah, and I, right, and I don't, I have a, I'm thinking that Leslie is not qualified. Should that. We had to put her name there because I think that's her application. But um I think we only have one, and that would be. Yeah. Kind of have this.
Mr. Fairchild, we have the honors there, so chooses.
Um.
I mean, I.
Do you know Mr. Baker?
I do not.
Yeah, but look at, and at his resume, there's a lot of things that Region Ten.
Yeah.
Um, would require.
I agree.
Pull up Mr. Baker for a minute.
It's 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 a long and distinct.
Yeah, he says uh, psychology has done a lot with mental health.
Registered qualified.
And I know Leslie, I know she works at the hospital, but she doesn't, you know, she doesn't have what he, what Region Ten needs. Um so Mr. Fairchild, any more discussion from the board members? Ms. Fairchild, you want to?
I mean, an anybody can. I I don't feel the need. If we don't have protocol or or procedure, it says we have to do it that way.
Follow the procedure, Mr. Fair.
That's what I'm saying. There is no procedure.
It's customary.
I see. Yeah, y'all go ahead.
Tradition.
Go ahead.
Okay. We break in the tradition.
Board of Supervisors approve uh, Austin Baker to serve on the Region Ten Community Services Board.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
All right. We have a motion by Mrs. Eager and a second by Mr. Fairchild and Mr. Austin Baker will serve on the Region Ten Community Services Board. All in favor? Anyone oppose? Chair votes aye. Thank you all. That was painful, but we made it. Uh, now we have presentation Free Hill Cemetery. Tricia Johnson Flavanna County Historical Society. Are you coordinator direct?
Exactly. Presentation?
Director, all right. Officially direct, okay.
In real life, it depends on what they.
Oh, okay.
Hey, I'm Tricia Johnson. I'm the director of the Flavanna Historical Society. I live three seventeen Shannon Hill Road in Columbia. Mike Sheridan is my representative, but I'd like to claim you all. Um, I'm here tonight to talk to you about uh, Free Hill Cemetery. And we have presentation. I guess you guys have it in front of you. So I'll just kind of scroll through it quickly. I want to add that I brought experts to the party tonight or an expert. And Mr. Nick Bon Harper, who is the senior archaeologist with Rive Anna Archaeological Services, is here. He's going to step forward in a minute and clarify a couple of things for us. Um, he led the fieldwork that's already been done here, so he's the one who knows everything.
And Ms. Johnson, just let me know if you want to, want me to go to that.
I will, so I do.
Looking at that picture, go back to that.
Go back to that picture. Yes, sir.
That's what I think. What you're looking at right there, folks, if you look down the grass and you see there's green, they're about eight feet tall. I think that's where the pastor was talking about. We found the grave site, the big green bush.
All the way at the back on the left.
That that's what you got the picture of right there.
It was a huge thicket, and uh, somebody who came to volunteer that day had the right piece of equipment to get into it. And Sam Hancock's, um, Bubba Hancock's uh, got to see the headstones of his grandparents for the first time in several decades. So that was a really moving moment. You were there helping out that day. Sheridan, Ms. Booker was there as well. Mr. Dahl was there. We appreciate all of you. So the next slide, just a quick glam, uh, glimpse of the eighteen twenty plat of Columbia. Sadly, it didn't show up very well. But to give you an idea, that rectangle is the meets and bounds of the entire town. Originally laid out in seventeen eighty-eight, and this is a eighteen twenty copy of the original plat from the Flavanna County Clerk's Office. I show you that so that you can notice that, uh, if you want to go to the next slide, Mr. Dahl. You can see that they're laid out in quadrangles, so there are four parcels per block. And each block is surrounded by planned roads. That's what those gaps are. Look at thirty-seven, thirty-eight, fifty-three, and fifty-four. That is Free Hill Cemetery. The road to the south that runs east and west labeled C, that's St. James Street or Route Six. The road on the western boundary that runs north-south labeled G, that's Tammany. E and H are two roads that were never built. But they are still there. One thing that we have been able, and I'm shortening this because your things have run long so far today. So I'm trying to be mindful of your time. Um, the next side, David Ross gave this parcel a deed of gift to the town of Columbia in eighteen oh five. And over the years, there was apparently a school and a church there on that parcel. And it was gradually given over to be a cemetery, but it has been since eighteen oh five cemetery for a remarkable community of free people of color who lived in Columbia free before emancipation. From eighteen oh one to eighteen fifty, the annual taxation records document more than five hundred free people of color living in Columbia. That's the extent of those records, so that's literally all we know. In eighteen seventy, Columbia Baptist Church purchased, and Mr. Dahl, if you'll go back one to slide three. And it's, that's the one, the close-up of the plat. If you look at three, four, nineteen, and twenty, that's owned by Columbia Baptist Church. Their church and modern cemetery are there. So skip ahead again, Mr. Dahl, sorry for that. Um, in eighteen seventy, Columbia Baptist Church bought two of those parcels at a later date. They bought the other two. So that parcel has been in use by the uh, Columbia Baptist Church, and you can understand why everybody sort of assumed generally that cemetery belonged to them. The next slide with the inscribed headstone, the ownership of the cemetery was legally acknowledged by the town council in eighteen seventy-nine. Uh, the state of Virginia required that new ordinances be drafted for each town in which the towns took responsibility for the maintenance and development of publicly held property. In Columbia, that included the cemetery and the roads themselves. That's acknowledged in the eighteen seventy-nine ordinances. And that ordinance actually identifies the cemetery using those town lot numbers. So we know for sure that's what they were talking about. In nineteen sixty-five, Columbia Town Council minutes record their intention to go to Free Hill and to log Free Hill and use that money from the sale of pulpwood to pay for their road development plans. Um, a careful search of land records from around that time found that no easements were purchased. We wanted to double-check and make sure that the county perhaps didn't have to purchase easements for the de- development of roads there. They did not. They owned it all. They didn't uh, get an easement to cut timber off of Free Hill Cemetery because they owned it. So that's the proof of ownership. Um, and this next slide, Mr. Bon Harper, if you care to join me, please. Um, this next slide talks about the, is is actually a map that Mr. Bon Harper devised after archaeological study. And I think he's going to chat with you for a minute about explaining what this map is and um and why we are are interested in the parcels that we are. If you don't mind, sir.
Um, yeah, so the uh the marks on the map um, are surface indications that we located in the field when we were doing the survey. Um, either headstones or slumps where graves become depressed over time. Um some of the graves have headstones, many do not. Um, as you can probably see, they're widely dispersed across all four lots. Um especially along the the northern edge, and I think one of the points that uh, Tricia is getting at is the the roads that bound the cemetery on the north and the east um were graded in the sixties um, and potentially have impacted burials that were beyond the formal boundaries. Um, and
Yeah, essentially ser- serving as a buffer.
Right. Um, and it was the idea being that those road lines would be included in the um in the parcels to provide a buffer.
Yeah. Do you want to go to the next slide, Mr. Dahl? Because that one, I believe, um, it shows, oops, no, that's, well, never mind. Thank you. You'll be here for questions if you have them. Um, so the next slide, and I'm sorry, I popped this one out of order. I was really excited because I just got it this morning. We did testing with G P R, ground penetrating radar, and two test sites, Free Hill Cemetery. These are preliminary results, and they have not yet been compared to the map created by Nick that showed uh, the graves that were um, that you could locate by observation of surface features. Um, so we don't know exactly how many more have been located. I'll know that in another week or so. But um, a casual look by the principal of Rive Anna Archaeology um, this morning. His observation was that there were quite a few found, certainly in the long rectangular area. Which is that clear area, Mike, that you were talking about. And then the smaller rectangle is the one that we're really interested in because that's in a wooded area. And the question was how effective G P R would be in the wooded area. We think we have our answer. It looks as if it may have been. So uh, G P R work throughout the entire cemetery uh, is feasible. And we need to get grant funding for that. The next slide, please. This is a parcel overlay of the eighteen twenty town plat. Um, and this gives you an idea of the four squares. And then the road traces, the next one is an enlargement of that, Mr. Dahl. So you have a better look. The road on the northern boundary that's been bulldozed in but was never fully constructed is Cameron. The road to. The road to the east that was bulldozed in in nineteen sixty-five but never constructed would have been green had it ever been made. So what we are here today to ask is that this board and the county move forward with donating lots thirty-seven, thirty-eight, fifty-three, fifty-four, and the road trace of Cameron and Green to Columbia Baptist Church to pass that on to the ownership. Next, please. That's the technical aspect of this. We're gonna get a little personal here now. These are three people that we believe are buried at Free Hill Cemetery, just to help you put faces to those unmarked and lost burials. The large image to the right is Smith Harris. Mr. Harris was born in eighteen twenty, enslaved by the Pettit family. Grew up next to Rybana Mills. He was the coach driver for the Pettit family when he was enslaved. After emancipation, he became the ferryman at Columbia and managed the ferry across the James River for decades. The picture at the top is Horatio Cousins. Horatio was also born around eighteen twenty. He was born a free person of color in the town of Columbia, and he was a hustler. He actually rented out horses and buggies and ran a livery stable in Columbia and in Palmyra. And the last image, which is a little small because the original picture is tiny, is America Smith. She was enslaved and she lived after emancipation in Columbia with her husband, raised five children. And all that I can tell you about America Smith is the back of this little tiny photograph we have in our archives is written America Smith, who we also loved as children. So these are some of the people that are buried there. The next slide is David Ross, the founder of the town, testifying to the free status of John Cousins who lived there. That's just to give you an idea, that's one document. There are dozens, if not hundreds, of documents documenting the free community of color in Columbia. It is a rich and deep history. Historians from North Carolina, Richmond, and beyond are now currently studying that community with an eye towards writing books. So this community is garnering attention as it should. The next slide. Nineteen sixty-five disrespect and damage by the Columbia Town Council. The nineteen thirty-six WPA report by historian indicated that there were stones brought up from the river at the head of every sleeper, meaning that every grave was marked with a field stone marker. There are very few field stone markers in this cemetery. It was one of the first things that caught our attention. The council's decision to log this parcel, which they knew was a cemetery for black people in nineteen sixty-five, for financial gain was a disgraceful and disrespectful act of racial discrimination. It continues to cause pain in this community today. And when I say this community, I don't only mean the residents of Columbia. There are descendants of people buried in that cemetery across this county. Everywhere I go, you know, I have an ancestor buried in Columbia. You know, my great-grandmother was buried there. You know, my great uncle. We know he's buried there. And these families have stories. The elders today will tell you about remembering when the cemetery was logged and graded. And how appalled and horrified the black community was. Still causing pain to people today. Your constituents, the people that you represent, whether it's Columbia or elsewhere in the county. So what can you do? At the request of Columbia Baptist Church members and other descendants of people buried at Free Hill, we plan to submit an application for a grant fund that just became available to pay for ground penetrating radar on this entire site, as well as fencing. The creation and installation of a congregate memorial listing all those names that Nadine Armstrong is working so hard to put together right now. Perhaps markers at the head of each grave, just a simple marker so that we don't lose those burials again once they've been identified, historical interpretive signage. This grant funding includes a requirement that the property either be owned by the church or that we can prove that there is the intent for the church to obtain the property. And after speaking with DHR, our understanding is that what we need is a letter of intent from the county saying that it is your intention to grant this property to Columbia Baptist Church. Mr. Payne's gonna have some thoughts on that in a minute. But I'm gonna finish up before that, Mr. Payne, just because I can. The next slide, what could the board of supervisors do? It lays this out again. The one after that, there's some folks you might know. It's community-led projects to study, respect, and preserve Free Hill Cemetery. It builds community. Here's some more folks you know. They all came together on one day and will again to continue to work to clear that cemetery and to respect the people that lie at rest there. Lastly, this project deserves our attention and support. So I'm here for questions. Comments.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Payne, you have thoughts?
Occasionally. I do have some thoughts, and I don't want to, I don't want anything that I say to evidence my feelings one way or the other. Except to say that, that the the Historical Society and its, and its partners have done an exceptionally good job of researching history of, of the property. The, the questions are, to my mind, are technical ones. And that is the because of the peculiar nature of the, of the early deed, the eighteen oh five deed. It, it, it's not technically complete as to some aspects that certainly I would, I would put in a deed if I were doing it today. There's ambiguity about exactly what was done to it. And so what the county's interested in is in it. That being the case, I think I would recommend to the county that if you, if you're inclined, inclined to do this, I would do it with a quick lane deed rather than, than anything else. But I'm not quite through. The the second issue is that I would recommend against conveying the property to the church. And the reason for that is that those of you that read, studied Virginia history know that Virginia has always been since the revolution intensely anti-clerical. Virginia had, had an established church before the revolution. And thereafter, Virginia's Virginia's development, political development was marked by hostility to, to not to religion, but to religious institutions. I, I would call that anti-clerical. The result of that is that there's a statute which still exists, and in fact, has been recently amended because of a decision in the United States Supreme Court. That permits counties to make donations to certain nonprofit organizations. One that's mentioned in there is the Boy Scouts. And was Mrs. Booker, unless you think it was sexist thing, they also approved the Girl Scouts. But the, the the problem is that the statute mentions in two separate places that, that, that authority does not authorize donations to sectarian entities. The, the the issue was when I saw this issue come up in the Supreme Court a few years ago, it came up and didn't come in Virginia, came up in another state. I was concerned about the constitutionality of that statute in, as a, as inconsistent with the anti-establishment provisions of the first of the, of, of the federal constitution. The Supreme Court, I think it was Connecticut, the other case came up in, which was another, another very much real thin line between church and state in Connecticut. What the Supreme Court did was it said the process that you, the project that you all are doing is improvements to playgrounds on, on playgrounds generally, public schools, private schools, entities like that. And one of the, the plaintiff was a church. And the town denied it, denied these, the app, the application of this project to their playground because they were sectarian. And the United States Supreme Court said, didn't say you couldn't distinguish between sectarian and non-sectarian. But it, it did say that to the extent that you have a, a project that does not involve the sectarian nature as such. In other words, it didn't come out and say, we'll print up the, 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 the town will print up the the publications for the church, something like that. That would be impermissible. But if you have something that's non-religious in nature and applies generally to all the other properties in the county, you can't fail to, to apply them to the, to the sectarians. And so the, the church in Connecticut got its playground improvements. The General Assembly was aware of that decision and added language to the statute, which, which makes the, is consistent with the, the federal Supreme Court's decision. But this is not a project of general application in the county. This is not like, you know, building sidewalks across the county or improving roads, something like that. This is specifically for what I would call a ministry of the church. And based on that, I think there's a very strong possibility that this decision would be, that, that giving the property to the church directly might well be held to be a violation of that statute. Now, if you will, that's the bad news. The good news is that there, there are a couple of ways that you might be able to get around that. One of which would be to convey it to a non-sectarian entity like the Historical Society. Now, if thereafter, the Historical Society wanted to convey it to the church, I don't see any impediment to that. So my, what I'm saying to you is, there's sort of a policy decision, and that is if you're free to do so, would you favor giving this property for basically for the use of the church? You know, talk about who's gonna use it, but you would, you would favor doing that. But there are technical problems that would need to be resolved. The second of which is assuming you're, you can make the conveyance to anybody, the Historical Society, for example. It would have to be a public hearing. And that's the general law of county properties. The third is that these public streets were dedicated by, by the plat to public use. And to abandon them, there's a specific procedure that you need to go through to abandon them. And then a, a procedure, that's a different statute, but it's, it's, there, there's a procedure for conveying off abandoned roads. And I think that would have to be followed too. And so there's a lot of details to be, to be worked out. If you approve the conveyance in principle, I would recommend strongly that it be by quick lane because the, we have not done, we haven't done a conventional title examination on this. And there may be other issues. Hopefully, they would be elucidated by the public, the public hearings. So I don't want to be the wet blanket that says you can't do that. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that there are issues complicated.
Yeah, definitely elucidated.
Right. May I?
I've succeeded.
May I say something quickly too about that? It, it's to bring us back to the point that what we're asking you for tonight is a letter stating that it is your intention to divest this from county ownership and see that it gets to the church. Or to us and then the church. It's a letter of intention. It's on a legally binding document. Nobody's gonna come back in a year and smack you. Yes, sir.
Does it have to say that, that their intent to give it to the church?
This grant wants.
Because that sounds like to me, it's the conflict that we're talking about.
Well, it's a letter of intent. It's not a contract and it's not an act. So what we're asking for is a letter, but I do believe you could say that it's your intention to convey it to us if that makes it easier to swallow, and then we could attach a letter saying that we will give it immediately to the church.
If, if that would suit the grant, I think you could do it. I was saying something like quick claim to an appropriate nonprofit entity for preservation and maintenance of the church.
We had the same, we had the same situation with the little New Falk High School. At New Falk.
Yes.
Drum and I owned that property. We gave it to the New Falk Church. The Historical Society had gotten at least fifteen thousand dollars worth of grant money to restore the little, the first high school while S.C. Abrams was being built. They were going to the Perry Fund to get additional funding, and the Perry Fund would not give it to the church to a religious establishment.
Right.
So the Historical Society went to the church and asked them to quick deed, a quick claim that to them, to you all.
Right.
And then you would restore the building and then you would give it back to the church. And I think that's what you're saying. So we've had that situation before, but the church would not release it. I mean, the church couldn't come to an agreement.
Sure.
Because they thought, well, the Historical Society is gonna take our property and we'll never get it back. And I'm saying, they don't want it.
Yeah, let me assure you, we don't want anymore.
We don't want it. They don't want to upkeep it and so forth. So we would never get through that mentality of some organization coming and taking our property and we may not get it back. I don't think that Columbia Church is in that frame of mind.
No, I think we've chatted about that. I don't know that you haven't had a, have you had an official vote on it yet? You did. They did. So it is.
They are willing to.
They're willing to, if, if the county needs to give it to us in order to make it work, they understand that we will immediately deed it to them.
Would, would that satisfy the grant? If we did a letter to the Historical Society?
Yes. If we followed it up with a letter saying that it's our intention to turn it over.
What date is it grand due?
He had the grant application is due the fifteenth. And that's why we're here and before.
So I, my concern, and I see no reason why the county would not want to do so. I think it's a great thing to do so. I guess I'm asking Fred, I mean, we're verbally acknowledging that we're going around the system.
No, we're not.
We're giving it to the Historical Society.
No, we, we've, we've, we've stated verbally that, that we understand that that is a pass-through to get to the church.
You don't have to do that officially. And who knows, somebody might change their mind. So I think the point is if you convey it to the Historical Society, the Historical Society then could do whatever they want. They, but they would have to make, they'd have to keep up with their restrictions because there is a restriction on the use of this property. For elementary uses. I forget exactly the language.
Yeah, and it's actually also, I mean, it ended up listed, or we're through the process, we have informal confirmation from the experts in DHR. They will leave that the property that is of, of the national register. So we are in the process of doing that. And that makes, in terms of development or any monetary value, that would make the property work moved. So it is not that the county was conveying a dollar amount of value to anyone.
Yeah, but I, I don't.
Actually, leaving yourself a responsibility because.
I agree with that, but the statute that he was reading doesn't seem to care about whether, what the value of the property is. And we, we are clearly acknowledging that we understand it's gonna be a pass-through to you all. And as, as long as the county attorney says it's okay, then I'm fine with it. And I can't imagine who would, I guess I should be speaking to the board. Who, whoever, I can't imagine who in the world would can come. Who, whoever, I, I can't imagine who in the world would can come contest this or create an issue over it. But if somebody did and somebody came back to this recording, are they gonna be very aware that we understand? Where this property is gonna end up lying as far as ownership? They, it'd be really hard to make an argument that we were not.
Well, I, I, I see what you're saying. But that's not your official action. Your official action is that you, when you get around to it, not tonight. When you get around to it, that the, that, the, the, the deed, this quitclaim deed. Goes to the Historical Society, subject to the existing restrictions, which are. I don't remember the exact language. It's, it's basically, it was basically designed as a, uh, an intent to. To have the town establish sort of a, sort of a um, religious and primarily education facility. Um, that's why I say there's all kinds of ambiguities in this whole deed. Uh, but. Whatever you do can always be challenged. I think the likelihood that it would be challenged is low in any event.
Yeah.
But it's much lower if you simply. Do it, do, do the transaction, take it out of the county's ownership. The Historical Society is not bound by this statute. They can do whatever they want. That's not up to you. And if the Historical Society, for example, decided to convey it to the Virginia Historical Society. They'd be free to do so.
When did we find out that we actually owned the cemetery?
Is the date inscribed in your card, Mr. Gold? I came to your office and said, hi, just let me know.
Do, how long ago did we find out we owned the cemetery? Two years ago? We didn't even find out when we took, took over the township.
When we discovered that book and went through it.
Less than a year ago?
The, the minutes from eighteen seventy nine that said, yes, sir.
I, I'm not, I don't, I don't want an exact date. I'm just, I'm just making the point of, it's less than a year that we actually found out that. And we didn't purchase it. We just. Got given to us. Yeah, we didn't, we didn't know anything about it. And, you know, it's the right thing to do.
Okay, any more discussion that I? Yeah. Okay, so we, are we in the agreement to go forward? We're not make, oh, this is not an action. This is just information, right? But we do, do we, do have to?
It's teeing up an action that of the next meeting.
Write a letter to the Historical Soci- Society.
Yes, they've got to grant.
Yeah, I mean, they, they need, I mean, I guess if the board.
What, what you may want to do is if you want, if you want to get it going is to direct the staff to. To meet with the, the Historical Society and. Draft, draft an appropriate uh, response, uh, letter of intent. And then you can ratify that on the, on the fifteenth.
Okay, is this agreeable with everyone? But isn't that still too late?
Have a special meeting on the, on the eighth.
Well, we, we have a meeting next week. I mean, so I mean, it's, it's.
But we, I mean, you, we need a letter. Do we have to ratify the letter?
You're gonna have to.
Okay.
Do a special meeting on the eighth.
Unless you want to empower the county administrator to, to.
Yeah, that works too.
You could do that.
Otherwise, are you gonna be here next week?
He's generally not here for just work session.
But he would have to.
He could. If we were having a special meeting, he had, I'd sort of, I'm saying. Yeah, 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 look.
No, I mean, I mean, I, I think the board has made, the board has made formal actions before. I mean, it's very few and far between when, when Fred's not, when Fred's been not present, they might, they've been very. And, and certainly I think Fred has been a prize to those things that have may have come about and.
Non-binding letter of intent, and if you send it to us, you don't hear back from any of us. You can assume it's okay.
Yeah, so we're kind of giving this.
Anyone?
Everybody understand, we've given Eric the authority. He's gonna send us, let him, we're gonna agree on it.
Yeah, and what's that? I'll, I'll work with this between Mr. Payne and, and, and Ms. Johnson and I'll send it to the board and.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. You have anything else? Okay, and thank the gentleman for coming and, and you're, I see you have your support system sitting there. Thank you. Thank you all. All right, we're gonna go with the, go through the consent agenda. Um, E is minutes of February the fifteenth, twenty twenty three. F is minutes of February the twenty second, twenty twenty three. G is C R M F call. Call water leak, um, that was the school system of C A R water leak. Caris Brook leak, right? Roofing, I guess. All right, and then H is fiscal year twenty three pay rates and classification. Our approval of open space agreement for Andrew J Mills. And Carol, Carol A Mills, and then approval of open space agreement with David J and Becky L Peterson. Anyone would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? If not, can we have a motion to approve? Second please.
Second.
Now, it has been motioned by Mr. O'Brien, second by Mrs. Eager, that we approve the consent agenda. They're all in favor? Anyone oppose? Matt, Mike, where are you?
You'd step away.
Okay, um. Chair approves and one stepped away. That's where you put it. Okay, unfinished business. B O S boards and commissions. Do you have a list?
Yeah, this is just sort of the.
All right, would you check where you are and just make sure that we are in the right. Uh, boards and commissions? Anybody wanna switch or anything that they don't feel like? They need to be there.
Just to bring a, a couple of things to the board's attention. One, we have some automatic changes. By the fact that, that the chair of the board changed. So again, Mr. Sheridan was, was the finance board chair. And again, the finance board chair is always the chair of the board supervisors. So by, by fact of, of, of. Chair Booker now, the chair, she would then be the chair of the finance board. I think that is the only one. I guess the only other one is um, from a legislative contact. Um, Vaco, um, the, the contact for Vaco from a legislative piece has always been the chair of the board. And so that's, that's one other thing.
Yeah, but Sheridan's the, on the.
I was gonna say, I'm on the board of directors, but if you want me to stay as the, the contact with you, with Vaco, I could stay there.
Yeah, okay. Anything else?
Mr. Sheridan asked me to go to the mayor's and chairs meeting because it was in Charlottesville, but.
Yeah, I attended that one, you know, if I.
So I didn't have to take a day off every day.
Yeah, right. And I went to the first one. And they don't have that many.
And I apologize for walking down, but I wanted to talk to the gentleman. There's a grave down there. It sunk really bad, almost washed out, and it was one that. Dad did. I don't, you know, if it's there, I want to fix it.
Okay, thank you for that. And anything else on this, everybody? Okay? And we don't have any new business, so I'm gonna, okay, go ahead.
I have an item. I don't know if this is when it should be brought up, and this is just Robert's rules of order. So, when, in, it, it was a fine vote. But back to the planning commission. You know, we kind of got a, in a thing of what's tradition and, and what's order. And I believe Trish had said I'd make, said I'll make a motion. And then was held off from making that motion. And um, I think, I think that was an error.
Yeah, what happened? Yeah, she said.
I don't actually think she said the word motion.
Yeah.
I don't actually think she said that.
Do you remember Trish?
But it'll be in the recording.
Yeah, yeah, we have it recorded.
I don't, I don't think she used the word motion either. That's the only reason I said.
It, it wouldn't affect the, the uh. The, the action anyway, because Mrs. Eager pretty clearly withdrew the motion when, when uh. I think Mr. Sheridan actually made, made a motion.
But can the chair, if, if somebody was to say, I make a motion, can the chair say, hold on? If, if she, if she withdrew hers as a result of that, then that would be because the chair said, hold on.
That may be. She has the right not, not to allow the, the chairman to say that. Chairman, but then have to rule. For some reason, her motion is out of order. Otherwise, the motion would be entitled to be, to be addressed and either seconded or not.
So, but a chair can say, a ca- a chair can get in the way, can not get in the way, a chair can.
In the way is a good word.
Yeah, let's say a motion had, I, I'll make a motion. The chair can say, no, don't make that motion.
No, I can't say, I wouldn't say, I couldn't say you don't make the motion, but I said, I think I did say to her. I think Mike has, cause I don't think she heard it when.
Yeah, Mike wasn't in the process of.
Mike was in the process.
You know, this is a nuance here, but this, this is, if the chairman comes up and rules on it, that's one thing. If she doesn't rule on it, then, you know, if you will, makes a suggestion to the member and the member agrees to it, then that is.
So any of us could do that then. It's not, any of us could say, when, if somebody said, I'll make a motion. Any of us could suggest after those words that they don't make that motion.
Want the most technical, technical answer, technical answer possible. You're not to speak unless you're recognized. Now, clearly, that's not the way this board does business.
Right.
We don't.
I'm just trying to, I, I, I've got a clear question though. Is, is, is that something? Is that something that's open in our process that we can say, once somebody's made a motion? Then somebody, one of, one of the rest of us can, can stop that motion from happening? And then us move away from it.
The, the, the member can't say, Mrs. Eager, you're not allowed to make this motion. Member can't do that. Now, if, if Mrs. Booker, as chairman, made a ruling on it, for example. Mrs. Eager, you didn't have your, you, you haven't taken the oath of, of, the, the oath of office. And therefore, you're not eligible as a member to make a motion. Therefore, I ruled the motion out of order.
But I mean, in the scenario that we have here that happened, any one of us.
Scenario we had here. And, and you need to be, you need to be very careful about. Asking me to tell you what I think the, the, the technical rules are because this board is, the procedure is. I think commendably informal. Uh, you know, if you're going to go through the technical aspects of it, there should be nobody speaking until the motion is made and either seconded or, or killed.
So how, how would we discuss it if it, uh, and for the board to hear it, if we couldn't discuss it here?
You discuss it after the motion is made and seconded. That's the conventional way to do it.
So either way, we'd have this conversation in front of the public.
Oh, sure.
Yeah, so I'm just saying whether we're having it now or if I'd have brought it up after that. Either way, the, the, the technicality of it, the concern of bringing up the technicality of it would still be there.
And I hope I didn't get on anybody's nerve, but the only person that said motion in the beginning was Tony. And that was the first words that came out of his mouth.
Yeah, I said, in that case, I'm gonna move and then I stopped.
Well, well, but we stopped, you kind of.
Well, I stopped and said, it's not my. Yeah, due to, due to, you know, tradition, if you would, um, you know, I said, no, really, it's Mr. Sheridan's motion.
Yeah, I've told you this before, and there's a number of things that, according to the, the pure letter of. Roberts rules and, and established rules of procedure, this board doesn't follow. One of them is, is the, you don't address the motion until it's made and seconded. And if you, if you go and look at a, a lot of other bodies, General Assembly, for example, or Congress. Member stands up, makes a motion, the presiding officer then calls for a second. If there is no second, he rules it. Uh, could have died for one of the second, is there another motion? We don't do that, like, it's, it's, it's a small group. It's much more collegial and, and informal. You get the same place and the substance of it, of the, the rules is, is honored.
Yeah, I think it's, it is a, a good practice, and you've mentioned that before. You get the motion a second and then there may be additional discussion.
I, I do too, by the way, because that seems.
At that point, if there's any additional discussion, and sometimes we do that and sometimes.
I, I agree with that because we could have a whole bunch of discussion that there's not even a second for, so why would we discuss it?
So we'll try to work on motion second and then, and if there's any additional discussion.
I'm not trying to shut down the informality.
You know, you can always get better or you, you know, you want to do it.
I'm, I'm just a policy procedure minded person. So, and the way my mind works is that. There's a process and, and especially when things could be challenged and.
I, you know, so.
Just remember, I'm the, I'm the, by your rules, I'm the parliamentarian. You want me to start cracking the whip, I'll do it.
Yeah.
But I will do it only because I'm ordered to do it.
Right.
Yeah.
So make sure we call for a discussion after the second Mr. Frank, Mr. Payne. Rashing on our boy. Discussion. That, that'll make people feel better.
Now, Chair, on your business, I just want to acknowledge the, the letter from Sycamore Square Property Owners Association, Mr. Charles White. Uh, he actually spoke to me at a meeting the other day. And uh, I mentioned, you know, that, that there's a fair amount of speeding that's going on there. A lot of people walking on, on the, the street there, a lot of kids and so on. Uh, so to the degree that we can encourage V Doc to do some traffic calming there. Idea, I think.
So I've, I've, I've also had a communication with um, Mr. White, I've had communication with V Dot. Um, I know uh, Mr. White, I believe, has had communication with sheriff's office as well. Um, so there are, there are a couple of things without getting too deep in the weeds on it. One, there was a, a discussion of. Of potentially some of the, well, what I had said is, is, is are there anything within the HOA covenants? That are not being enforced right now. For instance, if, if there's issues in the roadways. Because there was, uh, there was mention brought up of vehicles parking in the roads. Well, if the HOA covenants say. Vehicles can't, shouldn't park in the roads or can't park in the roads, is the HOA doing something? First, before the county gets involved with the resources to make sure that vehicles aren't parking in the road, for instance. Um, from a V Dot standpoint, I, I had a, I had a brief conversation with, with, with um. Uh, Scott Thornton, and I drove through Sycamore Square, Square recently too. Some of the mailboxes almost are overhanging in the road too. Um, so, so there could be something. To be said that potentially maybe the HOA would want to then have the mailboxes moved further off of the road. I mean, those are just a, a few things. I mean, certainly the county can say, well, you know, we want to use our, 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 our V Dot funding to do a. A, a traffic study or a safety study, but I think there are some other things first. That maybe the HOA maybe needs to look at. And then if, if, if the issue still is there, and again, you know. The sheriff's office is doing patrols, and if the issue is still there, then, then maybe the county does need to be involved. But again, those are just some of my, my initial thoughts, but I'm, I'm happy to.
Um, journey. I'm just sitting here thinking about that blue line that always comes to Vaco. The group that does the speed studies at schools, things of that nature. Um, that would be a thing for them to contact them. Do they do it in subdivisions?
I, I'm also uh, reminded in all this about um, when Village Gardens was being looked at. And all the discussion about Nahor, uh, Nahor Village and the concerns of. Uh, slowing down traffic there and, and it was talked about with uh, the uh. The bumps though, uh, the, the uh, speed bumps. Yeah, parking everything and um, I, I feel. If I remember right, I, I feel like the county is pretty clear that we couldn't participate. And that, that, that would be up to the, the Nahor Village to put in their own traffic uh, speed bumps and.
Well, yeah, I mean, if, if, if they, I mean, it, it, I mean, it is, it is a V Dot street and, and V Dot is generally not. Speed bumps are, are, are our last resort down the line for them to put that in. I, I mean, again, I, I think. If there are some low hanging, if there's some low hanging fruit there for enforcement mechanisms that the HOA has in place. I think those should be looked at first before the county, before the county gets involved. I mean, certainly. You know, I mean, the sheriff's office, from a speeding standpoint, certainly the sheriff's office can, can monitor that. It's, it's, it's a, it's a V Dot road. And then so that's, that's kind of well within their purview, but, but from doing a speed study or things like that before some of the other things are maybe looked at. I don't know, but those are just some of my thoughts on it.
Just wanted to acknowledge it, just make sure that we were.
Yeah, we can acknowledge it. I mean, because that, everything that's said right there. The ten store.
Sure.
Doesn't have to be a subdivision. And this morning I pulled up, and don't ask me why. I know I bring y'all horror stories all the time. But I come up to a T intersection and the parent decided to park on the opposite side. I come up to a T intersection, and the parent decided to park on the opposite side of the road. So I said, hmm, this is gonna be dangerous, so I pulled my bus as far up as I could to make sure the child had enough safe room to go between me and the car. I cut my reds on, I'm sitting there parked in the middle of the road, as the child crosses in front of my bus. A car is parked, so I'm watching the child get up on the bus, and I pick my head up, and the car is wiggling between my crossing arm. And the car that's sitting there, instead of just waiting ten seconds for me to shut the door.
They just take their lives in place.
Man, like I said, I, I mean, they stopped, so I was like, okay, they're stopped, so I'm watching the kid get on the bus. And I pick my head up, and the car is sitting right there, and after passing, man, I ain't gonna read that number.
It, it, it also occurs to me that, you know, when doing something for one, now you got Fox Hollow.
V Dot decision at the end of the day, right, so it's just whether or not we're.
Well, the, well, the decision, there is, there is a decision by the county, I mean, because the county does get funding, that that is kind of allocated to it for these engineering studies. So when, when the board says, we want to move forward with an engineering study, speed study, things like that. That is county's allocation to do these types of different things, so.
Because we just did the one from Broken Island.
Correct, yeah, I mean, so, so those, I mean, i- it's not coming out of the county's, you know, pockets per se, but it's coming out of county's allocation for other types of. Things that we want to do, so.
And Mr. Doll, just wanted to say, I don't think you can, you have to have your mailbox close enough that the mail carrier can put it in without getting out of. The truck.
Correct, but, but from what I understand, the post is right up next to the curb, and where the mailbox then is almost hanging over. Into the road a little bit, so I mean, that, that's.
Between those and trash cans, don't even get me started on trash cans on pickup trash day.
Yeah, no, no, I, I would agree with you, you don't want it too far back, but there is, there's that fine line, I think, and, 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 and it's probably. A fine line of inches.
I, I would, I would have them reach out possibly to that blue line.
Okay.
Because I know that they talked about doing, I think they do residential areas, and that might be something that they could have them come in, and. If they want to crack down on it as a, as a community. That could possibly be something, I, I can't remember the exact rule of it, but it was called Blue Line.
Okay.
Okay, what is that, Blue Line?
It's a group that's retired police officers, they. Put up speed signs to warn you, then they issue you a warning, and the third thing is writing a ticket.
Okay.
To make people slow down.
Okay.
There was one other thing you wanted to bring up about the Central Virginia Regional Housing Partnership.
Oh, yes. Um, the Central Virginia Housing Partnership, they're having their second conference. On March the twenty fourth, and they sent out, you don't have that letter there, but do you?
So what they did is, they, they, they're looking for sponsorships.
Um, we were the only. Last year.
The last.
Well, the last time they did it, I don't remember what year, it's probably a couple of years ago.
It was five hundred at that time, now the least expensive one is a thousand dollars.
It is, there's different partnership, partnership sponsors, a thousand being the, the cheapest, then the twenty five hundred, then there's five thousand, and so. You had, you had brought that up, so just remind them.
So I wanted to know if we wanted to sponsor that, um. Sponsor that conference this time, we, I'm on the voting board, and I've been to a couple of meetings, it's pretty huge. It's the whole region, and I know that Mrs. G, um, when she was here, she was very active. In a lot of those, um, committees, and they've done a lot of work, and. I feel like we probably don't know everything that they are doing, they've made a lot of progress, but. It may be, any of you all signed up for the conference, there's something on the twenty third, they're gonna meet with some of the presenters on the twenty third. And it's at the Omni, and then this, and then the next day, the twenty fourth, is at the Omni, and they have a, a special speaker, which I'm not familiar with. But the first one that I attended, the first one they had was very informative. Um, that was, but the beginning of looking at affordable housing, and they go into. Other areas as well, and of course, the COVID kind of slowed things down. But it's, it's a, they've done some good work, so I was just wondering if we wanted to be a sponsor. Who would be on, listed on the program. Um, it just said to them, we want to be involved.
How much is it again?
Thousand.
Thousands.
A thousand dollars.
What have they done for Fluvana?
Um, they have, well, Fluvana is well represented, they've looked at housing, they've looked at. How many affordable houses are here in Fluvana, they look at what kind of rent we pay. Um, they do look at us, we don't have as much as they, when they look at the other areas, Louisa and. Um, Charlotteville and, and Alamo, but, um, they do, they include us. In everything that they do, now, when you say, what have they done for us?
Yeah.
Um, I don't think they're at, they can't do anything, I mean, they can suggest. They can be involved in some decision making that we make, um, they can open our eyes to what we already have. And the things that we need to do, they're our resource for us, they can study certain areas for us.
Well.
Um, but as for what have you done for me, I don't know.
They should, um, give us the information that they've collected on our rents and our, what we have that's affordable.
I think it is, and, and we have had it somewhere.
Yeah, they, they did a, they did a big, um, uh, report, and it was finalized in April of.
Right.
Twenty twenty one, I believe.
And you know, we castled, Keith Smith was coming, remember the time Keith Smith was gonna come and make a presentation? And that, um, what's the guy's, Ned Galligan, it was a part of the Alamo County. Board of Supervisors, and our meeting was early, and he didn't think Mr. Gallaway would be able to get here. Plus, we were giving him ten minutes, they have been presenting at least a half an hour. They have been going back to counties, and, uh, I know, I think it was, um. It may have been Nelson County, and asked them to come back, because they do have. Some interesting information that I think we need to, we need to know about that information. So we're gonna, are we supposed to reschedule Keith, them to come? And talk to us, now whether that's going to be before the twenty fourth, I doubt it. He, they wanted to have just a special meeting with us, because they had so much to share. And they've been going around to all of the boards, presenting this information, so that's about all that I know.
But, um, go ahead. I, I might go to it, I just don't know if I'll be in town, so I'm gonna wait till the, the end, um. You know, we're at, um, we've advertised a nine cent increase, and, um. I already have people saying to me exactly the number of a thousand dollars, hey, how come? Especially when times are tight, you're giving that thousand to this organization and, and not us, and, um, and I say. I hear you, and, and so it might just be a thousand, but again, there's other organizations, and I, I, I'd have a hard time saying. When we're advertising a nine cent increase, that we should give money in additional places.
I, um, I really don't think that a thousand dollars will hurt us, I think it's gonna be a plus instead of a minus.
We come out of the board's contingency fund.
Yeah, it's a plus instead of a minus, I mean.
I mean, I think their, their efforts have been primarily to educate both the community and public officials. And related department, uh, related organizations, um, you know, about, uh, housing. Different approaches to housing, uh, how, how to, uh, how to take advantage of different programs. Um, and so, you know, they, they, they are providing a value added service, um, to, to the general area here. Um, and I know that they put a lot of work into what they do, um, and that the, the actual. Forum that they have was, was very successful and well attended in two thousand one.
So, I, I'm, well, I was just gonna say quick, wherever the money comes from, whether it's contingency fund or whatever. As I know, the whole board understands, it's still the taxpayers' dollars.
And, and, and to that end, I would say that this is an organization that's focusing on housing, which is of course one of the. Most important things that we do in general.
This year, I just think it's tight, and, uh, Mr. Booker, you said they've been to other boards, we were the only ones that. Gave them five hundred money last time, and we should have been the first ones that went to.
And that was twenty years ago.
No, I was on the board, I'm pretty sure, Mr. Doll.
I don't remember.
We, 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 it was just a couple of years ago.
Um, that first conference?
Yeah.
I, I don't think it was a couple of years ago.
Mr. O'Brien and I voted on it, Ms. Eager did.
Yeah.
I know we gave five hundred, but I don't remember what year it was.
Two years ago, three years ago. Um, so, I, I'm just, this year, with the way we got it, I just. I don't see it right now.
Um, yeah, I'm just hoping that, um. When we go and that we see, uh, everybody else has given something, and Fluvana County has given nothing.
Um, but last year, we were.
It wasn't last year, I don't what year it was, that, that first conference, I, I could. Text Keith later on, when I have some time, I'll find out when the first conference was.
Well, if, if, if other counties are contributing, we know that, then we can reconsider it, I guess.
Yeah, I guess we could, I'll bring it up again when I find out what other counties, we still get a no, but I'm, I'll still push forward.
Would feel bad, bad if you didn't, I'd think something would.
Yeah, we need to take some responsibility.
So, so Madam Chair, just, just a little, uh, housekeeping, so it's, it's after step in right now, we've got closed session items, and we've got a work session that was supposed to start at seven. So trying to get some, some direction from the board, I mean, I, I certainly know that some of the closed session topics won't be. Super quick, and, and, and I know there's folks here, so I, I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Take the time that we'll be back?
What time is it, it is now seven oh nine, so can we get through this and be back at seven thirty?
We won't finish all of them.
I don't, I, I don't, I don't think so.
You know what, in some way, we need to.
We could do it after.
Okay, this, we, we've had this situation, uh, too many times. There's something, it needs to be a better solution, what can we do differently? That we don't leave people sitting out here half an hour, fifteen minutes, when they've come expecting us to be out here at seven. Little late fine, so what can we do?
Yeah, the chair is supposed to keep order and.
Yeah, but.
Keep us moving.
Keep y'all from talking and.
Ozell, what did we just talk about? Well, my suggestion would be not to put it all off until the end, because we need to go get something to eat, or, we're just gonna go without that. If we came back, went to a closed session until seven thirty.
Yeah.
Okay. At seven thirty.
Maybe whatever.
Right?
You're not gonna, we can't finish the.
No, we'll have to go back again, well, what I'm saying, we can get done some while we're back here.
Yeah.
I had a Uncrustable at eleven o'clock, man, I'm, I'm gonna be eating inside of my stomach.
But anyway, let's think about this, though, and so we don't. I can come up, you want me to come up with a way?
Uh, yeah.
There's, there's only one way to do it.
What?
We have discipline.
All right.
Nobody talks without being recognized by the chair, and I'm not gonna do that.
We don't do that, we, we have a freedom of.
Minutes are ticking, minutes are. Enter to, enter into a closed meeting pursuant to provisions of section two, two dash thirty seven eleven A one. Section two dot two dash thirty seven eleven A seven, section two dot two, uh, thirty seven eleven A nineteen of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty. As amended for the purposes of discussing personnel, county attorney position, litigation, Gate Plaza LLC versus Fluvana County Boards of Writers. And public safety, can store firehouse incident.
Okay, do we have a second? I just, most of my Mr. O'Brien's and second, uh, Mr. Sheridan, that we go into closed session, all in favor? Chair votes, uh, we're now in closed session, we'll be back at seven thirty. I, at least three of us, you know.
Mute, mute.
That we recess from our closed meeting where we have discussed section two dot two dash thirty seven eleven A one. But I've yet to discuss section two dot two dot thirty seven eleven seven or section two dot two actually seven and eleven A nineteen.
Okay. So I'm in favor of that motion second, second. All right, most of them is still Brian's second name is Sharon on favor.
One by one. One by one.
Oh, I Chris calling.
Patricia.
I.
Mr. Brian, Mrs. Sharon. Yeah, but that. Okay, thank you all for waiting so patiently. I think we have a few people that are still here that are not staffed. Okay, mister. Oh.
Yeah, I mean, so so one, I mean, I I think, you know. So this this is an opportunity, one, just for a brief moment, if there's any county departments that want to advocate for things that maybe were not in their budget. Or I didn't include in my budget necessarily from a just funding standpoint. Um, and I think, I don't know if um, I think I see Mr. Hickman, Mr. Spitzer, I don't know if Miss Schneck wants to. Mr. Spitzer, you have.
If they have questions for me, I'm here to answer.
Mr. Hickman. Okay, so again, they don't really have any 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 major updates. I I will say the one thing from mister, I'll bring up Mr. Hickman's request is. Is in my budget, I funded, um, I proposed a carpenter position and that was originally at his. Remember, he requested two positions, one was a carpenter and one was an assistant HVAC technician. Um, I proposed in my budget, the carpenter position, kind of. As I discussed with him, I was going to only put one position in and 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 he kind of said, well, if you're going to do one, I would prefer to have this one. Since that point, and I'm assuming that's still the still the case, we spoke recently that he would actually prefer to have the assistant HVAC technician position in. Instead, if 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 only one position was going to be funded, and so just for the board's benefit, that that position is a lesser dollar amount, so. So if that's the, that's the case, we can get more into into the weeds of some of the budgets and department budgets next week, but I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And Mr. Heckman, would you, would you agree with that?
Is there anything Calvin that you want to elaborate on?
It could come down here. So so we can hear you. I'm sorry, Ms. Booker.
No, you.
All happens.
Yeah. Of course, I have it. Okay.
Well, it's good to see you.
And then really the next piece is CIP is really the bigger piece. I know we've got some, we got some folks from fire and rescue here and. And that's kind of really the chance for you all to kind of get in the weeds a little bit about CIP. The one thing to remember about CIP is is generally the way that the county funds it, it does not affect the tax rate because we use it out of fun. Fun balance. I mean, so so that's one thing to kind of keep in mind, but um, let me pull up the CIP really quick here. So I'm just going to kind of go down the page here really quick and um, just kind of discuss what things were in the budget this year. Um, for each department and which things I did not request that I pushed out, and then if you have questions, you know, we we may have some of those subject matter experts here to 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 answer your questions. So for Parks and Rec, um, Mr. Spitzer requested a Pleasant Grove Park concrete slabs under two of the structures there. He requested seventy five thousand five hundred. I did not include that in my in my proposed budget. Um, I pushed that out to the the out year. He also requests some additional funding for a Pleasant Grove Park playground expansion in the. And an inclusive uh, an inclusive structure um, for fifty three thousand five hundred. He had some funding provided in what? Yeah, some proper money provided in a previous year. And and he was to try and get some grant money to help offset that, but he has not been able to get any type of grant money, so to really to. To move the the playground structure forward, um, would would require some additional funding, so so I did include that in my proposed budget. And if you see here, um, he did include that as a as a rank of one, meaning it's more important. And going back to the concrete slabs, he put that as a ranking to.
Okay, when you say inclusive structure.
Basically handed a handicap accessible.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to clarify that it is for special needs kids. Okay.
Yep. Um, in in addition, he had in his uh, budget request, a Pleasant Grove Park stage cover. For seventy five thousand for the stage in the back of of the park. Um, and again, put an estimated in there seventy five thousand. Again, that was a a higher ranked priority for him. Um, so I did move that out to an out year and did not uh, fund that in my budget, and then the last one is. Carriers Brook Gym Flooring, the gymnasium over here, the flooring is thin and getting to end of life. And so again, I I did fund that and he put that in as a as an item one, so. Does the board have any questions or any comments that we can bring up to request or anything like said, Mr. Speaker is here to answer that.
You put it in an out year, you meant you just moved it one.
I moved it out one year.
One year, okay. Same thing you move for that in one year.
Everything if I didn't put it in this year, I just moved it out to the next year, so so again, you know. Again, next year may look high. I remember in this fiscal year twenty four, we had about ten point six million dollars total of projects, and so I probably. Funded about half of that amount, and so the others have pushed out to twenty twenty five, so. So that's that's for Parks and Rec. Does the board have any particular questions or you want to get more information on any of these items?
Let's see other, but remind me what other.
So other is either um, grants, uh, other could be um. You know, like for uh, Fork Union Sanitary District System, you know, the county doesn't fund those projects necessarily, it could be their own funding, it could be. Um, you know, ARPA funding or something like that, some some other type of besides county. County tax rate or or county fund balance funding is what kind of falls under other. So. So any question for Parks or Rec?
Thank you.
Mr. Spitzer. Um, for Public Works, again, Public Works requested, I I kept the capital reserve maintenance fund in. Um, kind of going down the line here, um, requested a hu- two hundred and forty five thousand for major equipment, major equipment being. Um, heavy equipment like, uh, and I don't remember what was in this one. Let me just open it up. It would be things for like skid steers, tractors, large, um, uh, like, I don't know, when I say dump trucks, I mean, large, heavy duty trucks with dump out bodies in them and stuff like that. Um, so again, a skid steer was requested and a one ton utility body pickup truck. So I funded the skid steer in in my budget proposal. I didn't fund the full request. Um, under Public Works Equipment Shed, the board um, provided some funding in a previous year for a equipment shed out here. Um, again, with the way prices have increased for that, the funding for that is not. Um, sufficient to be able to complete that project. Um, so the request was for an additional hundred thousand um, for that. Um, and that would be to house all the all the equipment and everything, all the heavy equipment and would that be for um. Uh, like um. Landscaping equipment as well.
No landscaping equipment will probably be in this shop over here. That'll just be for heavy.
Have the equipment.
Yeah.
Where would that go?
Back behind here.
Adjacent to our building.
Yes.
The the hundred thousand dollar shed would go where?
It it would be, it would be on this, on the property here.
Right behind this.
Shop. So that was, that was included, um, the Fluviana Community Center, we talked about that, we had some uh, some individual discussion about that. Again, six fifty was requested in there for a multiple of things to do. And as as you you saw at a previous work session, I funded a hundred and fifty thousand out of that request for some internal things. Um. The Fluvana County Convenience Center, there was a three hundred ninety thousand request for some upgrades in there. Um, I did not fund all those requests, although in the convenience center budget, there is some initial funding to do some site improvements on there. And we also get some proper money from Republic Services where we could also utilize some of that funding to do some of the improvements, but. But I did not fund the whole three hundred ninety thousand, and so some of the things, I mean, Mr. Hickman, you want to talk about kind of what you're proposing there?
At the convenience, I I didn't see that you had.
I I didn't, I did not include that in my budget, but.
Did not include it.
Um, but again, you want to talk about what what was proposed in that request?
We we did want to do some work out there at the convenience center. We do have a lot of phone calls from um, the road improvement at there and. And uh.
House.
Yeah. And so uh, we wanted to do the work, we did want to do that part to upgrade that building. We have put a new sign up there.
Yeah.
Seen the new sign.
Nice, very nice.
Yeah, we've just tried to make it look like a nicer place.
And and there was some discussion too about doing some reconfiguration, instead of having everything up top to the left. Most of the things are down to the right. When you go in, you know, you've got the compactors and so kind of reconfiguring it, so all of the. All the functionality of the convenience center would be down to the right when you go in.
That is correct. We're going to have two compactors and the brush will be brought down lower.
So how much was the road itself?
The road.
Improvements on the road.
I want to say to pave it was in the range of one hundred thousand. Because it had to be heavy duty.
Right, right.
Because you got so much traffic.
Got to be able to take heavy equipment.
And and plus, I don't necessarily know that when the road was originally done, again, it's got a big slope going down and going up, so I mean, there is.
And just washes.
Yeah, that slope has to be corrected.
Yeah. So so that's kind of a a big piece of 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 that.
I know I. Get emails. How much did the road itself?
Yeah, we're very just switching gears. How much did the fund balance increase?
I think we increased, um. I want to say as around, we added about two to three million to fund balances here.
All right, schools and.
Yeah, just over everything. That's that's what our net change of fund balance was. It was roughly around two to three million, okay. Um, yeah, we go down, go down the list here, a convenience center, um, library interior painting and carpet is is uh, that's overdue. Two hundred thousand dollar request there for for that project that was included in my in my budget. Also, the public safety building, the sheriff's, the sheriff's building, again, same type of thing, interior painting and carpeting throughout that entire building. Hundred and seventy five thousand, that was included in my budget. Um, social services vehicle, I think you remember when this maid came and spoke, she originally had seventy thousand in. And what I I I funded fifty thousand out of that seventy thousand because the county can get a better, better deal on pickup truck purchases than seventy thousand. Um, major uh, county building, major paving project was in there for nine hundred thousand dollars. I did not fund that in my in my budget. It's going to have to be done at some point. And you know, I think different areas have differing degrees of what needs to be done. Um, I just think in the past, we probably haven't good. Done a great job of of sealing the pavement and doing that, the annual maintenance that's required. Um, so I mean, a lot of it's, I mean, a lot of the pavements, probably the original pavement, I would assume, is that correct, Calvin?
Yes, it is.
Um, so so that was not included in my budget. Um, I know Mr. Hickman will want to speak on this historic courthouse restoration. So really, that's a, that's really a a multi-year project that totals roughly about two million dollars. To to do everything that's required. Um, again, I didn't fund the full thing in my budget and actually in this year. I'm I'm being optimistic that the General Assembly is going to provide funding for the county's courthouse project. Um, but again, I think Mr. Hickman would say that that is maybe even still not enough to do the project. Um, and there's maybe some more critical things that he would say that need to be done.
Yeah, you know, we we changed it into three phases and we're in phase one right now. Phase two is about eight hundred thousand dollars. And 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 Mr. Doll's budget is not, it is not funded. It is, uh, we're hoping for money from the uh, from the state, and that's just to cover the roof. That's not to cover anything else, and so we will be looking for funding for phase two. And then there's phase three on top of that, you know, we've got our two hundred year anniversary coming up in just a few years. Working towards that.
And it'll be Spanish, right, man?
I am hope optimistic, optimistic.
I am not. I'm not optimistic.
Wow.
So what was the amount that was taken in? So what was the amount that was taken out?
Uh, I basically took out, so there was about a million bucks. There was a, a million dollars. I'm sorry. There was seven hundred and sixty thousand in the budget this year. I funded it. Well, I shouldn't say I funded half of it. I included the portion that we would get funded from the state. So I, I did not fund any county contribution in this year. So that may be something that, that if the board finds value, that they may want to add some, add some, some funding to. Um, under county vehicles, again, uh, there was a request for different types of, you know, county vehicles can be from Public Works, from county administration, from, from planning and zoning and things like that. So there was a, a request for, for multiple, multiple vehicles for about two hundred and fifty thousand. I funded two hundred thousand out of that two fifty. And then the last item was some engineering for, um, public ut-, uh, for, for Carriers Brook Waterline out here. But again, that's under the other category because that's generally funded through, through fuzzies fund that ones. Um, so again. Maybe we, we could maybe take a look at it since it comes up this way. We'll have to see. There, there, there may be an opportunity to do something potentially. Um, so those are public works projects. Does the board have any particular questions on any of those items?
And if we don't get the money from the state for the historic courthouse, then we've, then we.
Then we have nothing, would have nothing in there to do.
Yeah.
Yep.
So we won't even get phase one done.
Yeah.
We will get phase one done.
We will.
We do have the money.
Yeah, yeah. Phase, phase one's a small amount. It's only about, what, a hundred?
Yeah, just over.
Just a little over a hundred thousand.
And they also in that proposal put in long-term things. So we won't, won't get behind in the future. You know, things that need to be done, need to do if we do them, then we can keep the courthouse up to par.
Yeah.
We're responsible to when you have a historical important building on your, your property.
So any, any, any further questions on public works projects? Okay, uh, going down, thanks, Mr. Hickman, uh, going down to public safety. So on the sheriff's project, he requested, um, six hundred and thirty thousand, five seventy-five and, and I funded five hundred and seventy-three thousand, two fifty, and I funded that out of ARPA funding. Um, if you remember, we have revenue replacement that we can use for, for certain types of, of, of projects and services. So I, I did include ARPA funding to fund the sheriff's vehicles for that amount and, and sheriff has may have some questions. Like I said, I didn't fund the full amount. I think I excluded one vehicle is the equivalent.
The reason we asked for that many this year is that, uh, as you'll see in my budget this year, we just about burned up our repair and maintenance line because we have so many old vehicles. Because during COVID, we didn't get any cars that year. So that basically put us to seven or eight cars. We'd get a year behind. So we're running cars with much higher mileage and we're having major breakdowns. We had to replace an engine. We had, you know, there was major things we've had to replace and, and it's, uh, kind of taking a toll on the repair and maintenance budget for this year.
Well, um, full duty loss maintenance versus school system.
We, what we, what we did is the, the engine before this one that went bad, um, without having a, a factory technician working on the vehicles, the dealerships would not honor the, the warranty. So now we go to Goodson's.
Yeah.
They have certified technicians. Not only do they, uh, you know, like change the oil, they'll do a, a safety inspection of the entire vehicle, put it on the computer, see what needs to be done to it. And they've done an outstanding job taking care of our vehicles. We buy our oil by the barrel and we buy all, all our parts. We get discounts from up at advance. So we, we do all that and, and make it work as cheaply as possible.
Okay. Um, so, so yeah, so, so again, I, I, I've used ARPA funding to, to fund the sheriff's vehicles, but I shorted them one, one vehicle.
How many will that get you?
Five seventy, that gets them probably about should be nine to ten.
Not between nine and ten, depending on, e- every vehicle went up some. So it kind of hit us there, but we're also going to, going to trade in some of our old vehicles will help us out with some of that also. Yeah. Any, any other questions or anything? Yeah. So we'll, we, we really don't know exactly what kind of vehicles we'll get this year. Uh, it'll depend on what's available. Right now, the only, the, what's looking like the most likely available vehicle because she forward ordered several hundred, uh, of the SUVs. It's, it's not our favorite. Uh, but it's, uh, the, the price increases in the charger make, makes it pretty much comparable. Charger used to be our, our cheapest vehicle. And we actually purchased the last two that were on the market. We snatched those up. But they're sitting up the road waiting on, uh, equipment to be, where we can get equipment to put in, build them. So. Yep.
Thanks, sir.
All right. Under fire and rescue, again, they add about, um, I don't remember what the full request is. I can go back. Oh, so, so all this kind of go line by line. So under ambulance five 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 and, and um, John Lai and, and Chris Alley are here from, from fire and rescue. So I'm sure they can talk on any of these. Um, they requested, uh, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand for ambulance five five five. And I did include that in my, um, that did include that in my, uh, budget proposal. Um, for brush thirty for Kent Store, it was requested for two hundred and twenty-one thousand, one fifty. I did not include that in my budget proposal. Also, uh, tanker thirty-one for Kent Store was due for replacement for a total of seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand, three hundred. And I, I did, I did include that in my, um, proposal. Um, and if you see here, it's in the other column. And the reason I did that because I funded it out of ARPA, ARPA revenue replacement to fund the, the, um, some of the, the public safety equipment. Um, going under fire and rescue, computer replacement, those are all the computers throughout the whole, um, fire and rescue, um, organization for all the computers that are on all the apparatus and everything. So that's a complete, um, a complete, uh, uh, upgrade, upgrade and swap over of the existing, uh, computer equipment they have. And that amount was two hundred and thirty-eight, two hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven eighty. I didn't, I did include that in my budget proposal.
Do, do I remember right that there was some sort of ticking clock associated with that technology? In other words, like if we didn't change it out this year, isn't there?
Well, they're, they're all failing. They're starting to fail and some of them are old enough that we, we can't get parts for them anymore. So we just, we just had to send two back because the touchscreens that we used to sign for the, uh, for the, the medical releases aren't working anymore. So they're, they're basically at end of life. They're, they're failing. And then the other two items, uh, so there was a hundred and fifty thousand for engine equipment, for engine twenty, for fork union, for a hundred and fifty thousand. I did not include that in my budget proposal. And then fork union, uh, uh, basically a UT, UTV for fork union for sixty-five thousand. And again, I did not include that in my budget proposal. And so I'm sure these gentlemen would be happy to answer any questions you have regarding any, any of the requests.
What's a UTV?
I'm sorry?
What is a UTV?
It's a, uh, all, all terrain vehicle. Um,
For, 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 we are.
Um, this, this one will be capable of not only transporting patients, but also it has firefighting capabilities. It not water, foam, hose reel pump on it. And it's, it's mainly for places we can't get a truck to.
Right.
Fork Union has area, low, low area and, and even railroad tracks, anything all the way from Scottsville back to Columbia. We have a lot of places we could use that. The, the, the UTV is would be a great tool and be useful for many, many, many things in many ways. Um, however, it is not the most important thing on the CIP and it can wait.
Right. Do we have any in town?
We, we have.
Got three of them.
We, we have one in Palmyra that, that's just a patient transport.
Mm-hmm.
The, the lake has one that they're kind of working on in Kent Store. Just obviously, um, asked for half the funding for theirs and they're, they're still in the midst of getting all that together. Um.
Yeah, the county provided funding to purchase the UTV and they're using.
And I, I know in the end, I believe theirs is going to be similar to what I want to do. It'll be have firefighting and patient transport capabilities. Um, the, but it, but it is not the most important thing on the list. I, I would rather have at least some of the equipment money for the engine rather than if I had to put something off. Um, but then there, there's a couple of things John wanted to talk about on the other side of the budget too, but I know it's a tight year and we can only do what we can do. So.
Can, can you, um, elaborate on the equipment of wh- what it is and reason for it?
So, so, so I, I talked a little bit about it last week. Um, we've been working on this engine project for way before COVID. Um, the truck kept, kept getting put off, whatever. But, um, when we added an engine to the station, no one bothered to put equipment back on it. They were kind of using it for a spare. And we really need two fully functional engines. So at the request of, and it was actually Mr. Doll's idea in, in originally, and, um, at the request of him, we asked, came back and asked for additional money for the truck to equip it. Um, at that point, we got granted right, right around a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars by the board. Um, I think it was a hundred and fourteen something, a hundred and sixteen. It was right in there. Um, unfortunately, that money got ate up in all those big crisis, price increases from all that time. And actually we had to come back and you had to grant more money just to get the contract secured on the truck. So that, that money will end up going into the, um, into the, the cost of the truck.
Yeah.
Um.
Now you have an engine that doesn't have hoses and.
It will still, we'll still probably have to put some money in it because almost everything has, uh, just about doubled in price, hoes, everything. So, um, but that would, that would get us what we need to get to definitely get going with it. Um.
Is there any forecast as to when we're going to get that?
So as, as you all know.
I'm not being a pessimist, but they keep putting him.
No, I, I don't, I don't have an exact answer, uh, Mr. Sheridan, but, um, as you all know, we signed the contracts for, for three trucks a year ago, February. Um, originally the pre-engineering for the engine was supposed to be in this month. Now it's moved to more towards the end of the year. Um, I talked to the Atlantic salesperson last Friday. I saw him at a show and, um, he said it's moved like three days. It's somewhere around like October to November range, somewhere in there for, right now, unless it moves again. Uh, Pierce is, is way backlogged on their trucks, um, right now. And so you're probably looking at another year before we see the truck once the pre-engineering is done, at least a year to a year and a couple of months. So honestly, even if we could work out where we do like split the money over to, to budget years or something would even work. Um. Well, it's, it's definitely an idea or, you know.
Yeah, I guess the thing for the board, I mean, if, 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 if you feel like you want to fund it, I mean, if, if you fund half of it this year, half of it next year, I mean, I, I would say fund it all at one time if you're going to fund it at this point. Or if you're going to fund it all a different year than just fund it all. I mean, that's, that's my recommendation. And certainly the board can.
What, what I'm concerned about, um, waiting until next year is, is prices are, one, prices are still going up. Two, there's a lot of items that are still very hard to get and, and back order takes a long time to get them. This, this would be able, this, this would give us the opportunity to be able to get the things we need for the truck. We could store it. And when the truck comes in, we, we'll basically be able to put everything on it and, and, uh, put it in service. Um, we wait till next July or, or a year from July. The truck will still won't quite be here yet. However, we'll be waiting on equipment for it. So that's, it's, um, you know, I, like I said, you guys have tough decisions this year. I'm not going to jump up and down and holler and scream or anything. I mean, it's, it is what it is and just.
We appreciate that.
Just, just, just letting, letting you guys.
Kind of looking forward to.
I hate.
You're looking forward to be jumping up and down. I think this goes on. I don't want anybody seeing that.
I teach it to middle school. I don't, I haven't had enough of that today.
But, but no, I mean, I, I know it's a tough year and everything, but, but that's kind of the story on it. It was, um, you know, it started as a suggestion from the county administrator's office to try to help us out to catch us up. Um, uh, because, because, uh, we're, you know, we'd, uh, Fork Union struggles a little bit financially and that's from, from leaders, a little bit of past before me, but, you know.
Uh, and something Chris said to me recently, a little bit unrelated, but kind of related, it, it's, it's just a good thing to, for me to think about. And something I'd have, I would have never thought about, that fundraising for them, when, when you look at the, uh, I'm trying to think of the way to say the, 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 the community that each station is in. Some stations, based upon the community of people that they're serving, are going to have different abilities in fundraising. You can have one area where you have a more money, where it's more affluent and therefore to have a function can get more money in compared to another community that doesn't have as many resources. And I don't know the extent that that, um, uh, affects or is true here. But to me, that's just two plus two equals four, meaning that's clearly common sense, it would seem. Um, but, uh, and I'd like to, and, and I'm, I know I'm in, in at least through the rest of the week, I, I'd like if I can come down and see the truck and see, you know, I'm a visual person and just see what you're talking about, what it needs to be finished outfitting and so on.
Yeah. And I mean, you, you're welcome anytime. You have my number.
Yeah.
Give me a call.
I will.
We, we've talked about, you know, having somebody down, uh, every so often, Mozzell stops by when she sees us out there.
When you're cooking.
Uh, you know, and also the other thing too with, it's usually when we're cooking, but, um, but, but, um, you know, you know, as far as fundraising goes too, is, uh, volunteers.
Yeah.
The calls are increasing. Um, the training hours are increasing. It's, which means things have to be done around the firehouse and stuff like that are increasing. So these guys are putting all their time in that. And, and it, it's hard to get people down there on an extra Saturday or something to wash cars. For this, we might do.
I'll say this much. Our big fundraising event was more team building and was more of community event. We used to do a Brunswick stew. There's still pictures I've got and I look back and smile at them.
Yeah.
With Dad out there stirring the pot in the Brunswick stew. But if we do a Brunswick stew and sell three hun- two hundred quarts of Brunswick stew at seven dollars a piece.
Y'all still do it?
No, we haven't. But that's fourteen hundred dollars, Chris, and that buys you five halogen tools.
But you don't do it because you can't get the volunteers to come out and do it?
Yeah.
Why not in Kent Store?
Fork Union used to have.
I mean, like I said, I'm wearing my patron's knife. If that thing goes off, I'm leaving. Uh, I hate to say it that way.
Well, you have to, what you have to think, you've got a different people. I mean.
But I'm saying it doesn't raise.
Yeah, Fork Union.
We're talking about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to fit in one vehicle. And that's not even all.
Then the other thing.
And I'm talking about raising fourteen hundred bucks.
One, one thing that's unique for Fork Union too is, is remember our, uh, our building was a FEMA building, so restrictions on things we can and can't do with the building too. So that puts an extra on, on that particular building versus some of the others can, can, like, we can't do bingo. They can do bingo. Like, it's just, you know.
Yeah. New Canton still does a barbecue, uh, chicken. They sell the barbecue chicken plates, but they're selling them for ten dollars a pot. So.
Yeah.
Like I said, even if you sell a thousand plates, be a lot of chicken to cook.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's ten thousand bucks and that buys you enough.
Probably a good sixteen, twenty hour day for them.
And it's not one day. You're talking about a week long event.
Yeah.
Cutting vegetables and everything else.
You remember when Palmyra used to have the sign out there, the old Palmyra Fire Station, where they had how much they had saved and, and you could go by and see how much they had raised and where they wanted to go. That was motivating and people would, it sent out notes, people would send it in. But everything's changed.
I've brought up with Chief Alley and, uh, with the guys from Palmyra and doing bingo at Kent Store at the ARC Hall with all of a sudden, then you got to start talking about gambling licenses and everything else, but you know, and who's going to get there to call it and how, you know.
It's a lot more to it than just doing it. It really is.
You, you had said you would not suggest doing it in two halves. Why is that?
Well, I mean, you can't, I mean, I, I guess the question is if the board wants to fund it right now, just fund the whole, the whole bit right now instead of splitting it up between, you know, between the two years.
So it's just changing the.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I mean, if, if, if the board thinks we want, we want to fund it this year, we'll then just put the full amount in this year. And that's.
I hate to ask this question, but I have to. What is that going to put the cost of this truck? What is that going to put the cost of this truck at? Over a million?
Is, uh, we signed the contracts for seven something? I, I don't have.
But then we gave you the extra one fourteen. That's what I'm saying.
But see that, but that's, that's, that's part of that seven. There's just a twenty or thirty left over somewhere. And that, I was kind of holding that back for pre-engineering in case there was some sort of mandatory change.
There always is.
And there usually is, there's, I guarantee you, there's been E T, EPA or DOT change since then. So that, that's probably going to get ate up in that once it goes to engineering. So that's, that's where we're at now. I mean, there.
No, the truck was, I, I, I think we. Fifty maybe?
Somewhere, somewhere now. I'd have to go back and. I've got it somewhere. I'd have to go back and find it. I just don't, I didn't look it up before I came.
I'm sorry. I keep hitting you with questions. I don't think about it until I sit here and look at this. Trust me, I do that Mr. Doll all the time.
It, it's go put it somewhere between eight fifty and nine. Would, if you can't include the equipment in that.
And again, what, what I tried, what I tried to do on this C I P, I tried to, I didn't, I tried to fund a little bit of everyone's request. Uh, again, I didn't fund the full thing, but I tried to fund usually at least mostly half of everyone's requests I tried to do. So any, any further questions on the, uh, fire and rescue, uh, equipment or C I Ps? And again, next week when we get into the budget, I mean, we can certainly add some of these in. We'll have fun balance numbers for you. I mean, fun balance numbers are always at the end of the board package too, for, for where it stands and and so, so again, out of, and like I said, we'll go to the schools, out of the town.
Just brush the spelling on that. What is that actually?
Oh, that's brush. It's, it's incorrect spelling.
Somebody probably had one of those little blue and white cans in front of them, combined brush and. It's the truck that we had refurbished. We took a twenty-year-old truck, took the body off of it, put it onto a Hummer chassis and so now we have a slash monster of a truck. It didn't cost us anywhere near as much in the beginning, but it's how old now Chief Alley?
It's the same truck I talked about last week. It's, um, the truck itself is twenty-five years old and the refurb is somewhere between eight and ten on it.
So it was due to be replaced quite a few years ago, but because of the refurb, we, we put it off a few years and it was due to be replaced this year. That was the, the agreement we had reached, you know, so they had refurbished it. And I think Tanker, if I remember correctly, Tanker thirty-one is a nineteen ninety-eight truck, if I recall, and that's the reason I funded.
That's going to break my heart though, because I can tell you right now, that's the best driving vehicle in our entire fleet, because I've driven just about every one of them. That thing, man, it'll get you in trouble.
I personally have an issue funding the, uh, equipment myself, so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, that, I mean, next, next week, we get in, if the board wants to add the one fifty-two, the, I think it's one fifty, wants to add the one fifty-two, the, as we're going through, we can certainly, we'll certainly do that.
If I may, um, since I wasn't here last week and I apologize for that, I had scheduled a trip out of the country, so I wasn't, wasn't able to be here, but there were two, two things in the operating budget that I'd like to bring to your attention. Um, the first is the, the chief one budget. For the last several years, we've been asking for ten six, ten thousand, six hundred for it. So it's not a big budget. Um, but with the costs, I, I had requested twelve thousand this year, um, and Mr. Doll cut it back to five thousand. I am afraid that that is going to be really insufficient for the chief one budget. Basically with, with fuel costs now, that five thousand is barely, is probably going to cover the fuel and very little else. That won't cover primitive maintenance and oil changes and repair bills on the vehicle itself. And any equipment he might need if he has to replace turnout gear, gas detectors, any of that stuff. That all comes down to that same budget, tires, repair costs. So I'm, I'm very concerned that five thousand will not be sufficient for that. So at the very least, I'd like to see it go back to last year's budget of, um, ten thousand, six hundred, if, uh, if you guys are willing to.
I did have a specific reason because I was told, I was told in the past that, that part of the money would, was kind of a rollover. And so some of it was for operational, but some of it was to build up to at a later point, purchase a new chief one vehicle. And so the county has been purchasing the vehicles outright instead of, instead of having to.
That is, that is correct. We would, um, the, Mike, the previous county chief would save back what he could, but not, not five thousand dollars a year, like just whatever little few hundred, a thousand, fifteen hundred might have been left over was saved back year after year after year. And, you know, every fifteen years or so, then he, I think the last chief one vehicle was new, but most of them have been used just because whatever, whatever he, he saved where he could, but he, he not, 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 not having the budget.
I mean, so, so I mean, again, I've, we've, we've made notes, um, to about the chief one. Okay. So I mean, certainly the board can revisit that next week when we go over, over that.
The other thing I'd like to bring your attention to is that the, uh, the, uh, uh, Flavanna Fire Budget, um, is Mr. Doll has, has recommended, um, about ninety-one point four percent of our request and the Lake Fire Rescue Budget is only being re- re- recommended at eighty-four point nine percent. So there's a significant equitable fairness, if you will, there. If, seems to me, um, they should both be funded at similar percentages. And that would raise, if you, if you funded the lake at the same rate that you fund, uh, Flavanna Fire, that would change the four oh four to four thirty-five. So I'd just like to bring that to your attention as well, that, that the rate of, uh, funding versus request is significantly different for those two. Have y'all talked about why that is?
Talked about why, what.
Why they're different?
Uh, I, I guess a little bit, one of it comes down to the, it's just trying to squeeze in what you can. I mean, I'm happy to pull up the budget.
Well, we can look at it next week too.
I, I'm mostly at this point, I wanted to bring it to your attention.
We talked about the chief one part a little bit last week, but I, I, I didn't even, I didn't catch that when I presented the budget to you. So we did not talk about.
And I hadn't run the numbers.
Cause he hadn't run the numbers yet either.
At that point, so we couldn't.
And back to chief one, so you're talking about, call it fourteen or twelve hundred dollars each year that kind of.
Whatever might, just whatever was left over, I, you know, so it's probably different every year, honestly.
Yeah. So, uh, taking that amount out this year, to me, the amount, I mean, it could be a one-time event that it's at much less. Meaning if, if you are sitting or in chief one, if there's money set back, it's not all about necessarily how much comes out. It's not, it's not about creating a precedence necessarily. I guess I'm asking this as a question. If there's eight thousand dollars sitting in that account, then it's, you follow where I'm.
Yeah. And I, and honestly, I don't know what's in that account.
I don't know exactly what he's got. I do know in a conversation I had with the chief last night, um, there's a, a little bit of money that he's got to put out of that account into the, um, new car that's been ordered. And I think Ken Store's got to do the same, just because it's been a price increase between the time it was approved and the time they found company to build cars. They're getting, they're getting built the same way. So I don't even know where that is, honestly, but.
So some of that's going to get.
Into the car too, so.
Yeah. But I, I think, you know, if, if you at least could fund it, you know, at last year's budget, I think that would go a long way towards keeping him solvent.
Do you, do y'all keep? I, I'm sure you do. Keep a, uh, a yearly record of where all that money. Yeah.
Because, I mean, we, we have to file taxes just like.
Yeah.
And the other department, even though we're nonprofit, we.
You still have to do it nine ninety.
So what, what happens is we have a county treasurer, all the departments and, and even, you know, chief one manages his own budget. But, um, all that goes to the county treasurer and then, and then we, because we're charged as Louana County Fire Department, so we have to file our taxes as one.
Yeah.
Um, even though we have our own separate operating budgets for each station.
Could, could we? So when we talk about whether we bought it back just to level funding with last year or whatever, I don't know, is that something that we can see of where the?
I'm sure Mr. Lynn could, could provide those numbers for you. Yeah.
That, that would justify, you know, if, if, if there's, if the money's truly being used, then to me, it's just an easy thing, potentially an easy thing to say. I don't know. What do you think? But in, in other words, if they're saying, if we level funded with last year and they're and, and I'm sure the argument would be they wouldn't ask for it if they weren't going to use it, then wouldn't we be able to say, uh, see how they use it? In other words, if this is going to take, just pull a number out of the air, three grand out of important needed yearly money, then we'd be able to see that that three grand is needed. If it's not needed, we'd be able to see that too.
The county standpoint, we don't, we don't have any requirements in place to, to request financials or see tax returns at the end of the year. I mean, some organizations, they have to do that. Some organizations, there's an agreement in place that if the full funding is not used within that fiscal year, it goes back to the locality. So there's a lot of different things that that the county could look at if they want to, if they want to take a deeper dive into that.
Again, you know, I mean, I, I haven't been in government a long time. It's just, to me, it makes sense. If there's some debate of how much it should be, it, it doesn't need to hold, be a whole lot of debate if, if you can see the numbers. And I'm not thinking about creating a precedence or any of that. I'm just.
I have a home, I have a personal Tahoe and right now it's costing depending on where you get gas right now, eighty to ninety dollars to fill it up from empty.
Yeah.
You figure a tank of gas a week, say, say there's four weeks every month and twelve months, which some months are a little longer. If you put a tank of gas a weekend, that's five thousand dollars in the year right there.
Yeah. So maybe it's eight thousand and not ten thousand, but maybe it is more than ten thousand. I'm just saying the numbers, the data's there to, to reflect on and, and make decisions upon it. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't have them, but the, the data is there. No doubt about it. Any, any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
And then, uh, last but not least, uh, schools, again, capital reserves on there for the schools. Um, they requested a generator for Carishbrook Elementary for fifty thousand. I did not include that in my budget. Really, it's probably the biggest item that I did not include in my budget. They requested one point five million dollars for a central bathroom remodeling renovation. And I think, uh, I think, uh, Dr. Stribbling, when he was here last, I think he's talked a little bit about that project. Wireless upgrades, uh, Flavanna County Public Schools Division Wireless Upgrades, they requested um, six hundred thousand with one hundred thousand of it being, uh, I think some state funding and then five hundred thousand from the county. So.
Fund that last year?
We funded, um,
No, we funded the high school. They came and asked for a hundred thousand back.
From carryover.
Carryover.
Yeah, maybe that's what it was. I know that they, that they were pushing to get the wireless redone in the high school. That rings a bell. So it was.
The high school was the inter.
Cause they couldn't communicate to classroom.
There is, um.
So a wireless upgrade that was done there.
That was two years ago.
I think it was two years ago. And let me take a look at this, because I don't.
Those stinking computer people, that's, that's the business to be in.
Um, let's see, this request is similar to a request from last year with specifics to the F C H S wireless upgrades that was approved. So F C A, it's F C H S was approved. And so I, I believe as I'm just doing a quick scan, I believe this is for.
Three?
Yeah, for the other three schools.
Other four.
Yeah, let's see, it says, uh, due to the number of access points in multiple schools that would, would again go through the E-rate process. So this is for more schools, whereas previously it was specific to the high school. Is what I recall, as I'm reading this.
Hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand and we're approving.
Six hundred thousand?
We can approve six hundred.
That's what's in here. A hundred thousand from estate and then five hundred from us.
Yeah, they're.
Yeah, that does make sense, um.
We can, like I said, the.
Oh, I think the, I think the, the, the catch there, if I recall, we kind of went through this last time is they give you the full number, then they got to do the E-rate and then they get that money back.
Yeah.
Yes. And, 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 and I think they give us the low number of E-rate because they don't exactly know what it's going to be at this point.
So that's, that's the cost of it for pre-E-rate.
The six hundred is the cost. We put five hundred county, one hundred E-rate, the hundred E-rate could potentially be more.
Could be more.
It could be more. I think they, I think they gave us what the low end E-rate is going to be.
Probably get clarification.
Yeah.
Yeah. And when it comes back, then that becomes back to us.
Yeah, or it's less, I mean, yeah, I mean, it's less county funding that the county has to less general fund money that the county has to balance that project well, is the way it works. Um, again, they requested paving, um, they've got a multi-year paving project. And again, I think once, once we decide to bite the bullet and do county paving, it probably makes sense to do one big consolidated paving project between both county and schools and and, and, and get some economies of scale to do everything at once. But again, they're requesting, they requested three hundred this year, five fifty, well, three hundred two fifty and then two fifty. So they're, you know, they're getting close to, close to, you know, eight hundred, nine hundred thousand, too, similar to what the county is requesting for paving. Um, Flavanna Middle School Annex Gym Floors and Bleachers, um, requested one seventy-five. I did not include this one in my budget. And then the last two items, school buses and student transport vehicles, five eighty for school buses.
Wreck me if I'm wrong. Hit me by thirteen school buses last year.
So we purchased.
Ten with the money.
That's with that.
Funding and then we think we bought three.
I don't, I don't think, I think they purchased, there is a few buses they purchased out of their operational firms, I believe.
I never called a number like eleven, but either way, ten, eleven, thirteen.
I just, I don't want us to sit here and have sixteen buses that we have to replace in twenty years. I mean, it, it, we talked about the twenty-year life cycle.
Right.
And we bought a lot of buses in the last three years, four years.
I mean.
They say that, I think, I think that's what they talked about is a twenty-year life cycle. Um, I, I, I may be wrong, maybe fifteen. Uh, I know I've driven buses that were thirty-some years old before.
Yeah.
Uh, but that's a long time ago, because that's when we, I first got on the board, we hadn't done them in a while, but we've been buying.
Yeah, we took out, we took out debt proceeds and took out debt to do the buses in fiscal year twenty-two, I believe.
Just remember the number sixty-six, I think, or sixty-eight is what they said they need on a daily basis.
And then I think last year for, or for the current fiscal year we're in for twenty-three, I think we either didn't fund a lot of buses, or if we did, we only funded a few.
We also funded the upgrade of the air conditioning.
Are they driving all of those buses on the road?
I, I thought I remembered the number and like I said, it gets together sixty-eight or sixty-six were the number of route buses that needed.
But what, I, I don't mean to sarcastic or trying to cut this off, but what is the, what is your, I'm missing what your point is behind saying that about.
All right, if we buy twenty buses in two years, well, if we do like we've been doing, that means twenty buses are going to go out of service in however long their life cycle is. So then we got about twenty more buses in two years. And I've been after, for a while to say, okay, we need, let's say eighty buses total. Well, if it's a twenty-year life cycle, that's a pretty simple math problem.
But they're not requesting it that way, right?
No, I mean, that's.
We fell behind. We fell way behind a long time ago.
But, but if, but the schools aren't requesting to do it that way, correct?
Well, they're, they're requesting trying to get caught up with the old buses and get the old buses out of service.
Isn't that a state requirement though?
And I don't think so. I don't think so.
More of a standard and a suggestion. I mean, there's, there's, you know, I mean, I think like fire rescue talked about, they've, they've got standards.
Twenty years.
Like twenty years to replace buses. I think there's a Department of Ed standard probably for the life cycle.
There's not a law, because I'm telling you in two thousand, I was driving buses that had nineteen seventy written on it.
And if you go back to the school's traject- trajectory, you can see here, they requested five eighty and twenty-four, five eighty and twenty-five, and then they ramped it down to three fifty and twenty-six, three fifty and twenty-seven.
That's three.
Yeah, three fifteen.
Basically, I'm thinking a hundred and twenty. Basically, I'm thinking a hundred and twenty thousand or a hundred and ten thousand per bus.
Yeah, twenty-three per year is, you know, twenty year life cycle. So that's.
So aren't they doing it?
What's that?
They, they are requesting somewhat of that cycle.
We're still trying to catch up. And Mike did point out that we did, what Mike's saying is we bought so many that if we buy more right now, you're going to end up in the situation twenty years down the road where you have to buy twenty-three buses.
Yeah. Assuming they're all replaced at one, at one time.
You know, that's, that's the point that I've been trying to make is, and I know we're trying to catch up, but.
But if you front end it too much, then you're the same pickle down the road is what you're saying.
Yeah. I mean, then we put a board that's twenty years in front of us and the same problem that we're dealing with right now instead of.
Yeah. And we probably couldn't get twenty buses.
I mean, they'll probably float on air by then.
What?
They'll probably drive themselves. They just go to house to house and hit a button.
But, but, I mean, a lot, there's a lot that is happening with buses. A lot of schools are now deploying electric vehicle buses. Um, and, uh, um, you know, there's, uh, you know, who knows what other technology will come out. So you gotta do it, you gotta do what you gotta do. But maybe it would be really helpful in these situations if there was an actual life cycle spreadsheet that said, here's what we have done.
And it looks like three years down the road, that's what they're going to try to do.
Right.
But, I mean, I'd like to know how many we've bought since we've been on the board in ten years.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, I, we, we could find out what was the amount of funding that you provided every year. And it's pretty easy to figure out. I mean, you know, each bus. Give or take, you know, now it's about one ten. I remember at one point they're a hundred and then not long before they're, you know, high nineties or something like that.
Eighty-five or something.
But the system had a, a, a running chart like that. And how many miles on these buses?
No, no, they're years. They have it by years, I think. Well, they may have it by miles.
I'm sure, I'm sure they've got some type of chart. I don't know what.
But, uh, that, that's just the point that I was trying to make, Chris. I'm not trying to be argumentative about it, but, but over the last.
Said at all.
But, you know, it, we've just, we've bought so many that all of a sudden, if we're still using gas and diesel in fifteen years, we're going to have to start buying five to seven to ten a year.
So, so, so that's it for the CIP. I mean, again.
Uh, there's one thing I will say right now, and I will bring it up to all y'all. And I bring it up every year and I have no idea why we've not done this. The track at the middle schools in horrible condition. I will send you pictures tomorrow. The, I don't know how long ago we put in not asphalt, but a rubberized surface. Well, the rubberized surface has gotten old where it's gotten cracks in it. And now it's just, there are holes. I mean, you get towards the finish line and there's five foot long holes that are a foot and a half wide in the, in the rubber. Now, granted, it's only that much of a drop off, but if somebody split and we keep trying to patch it and patch it and patch it. And the uh, the water won't leave the track. So if we get big rains, we end up with a moat. Does remember how the water used to pile up in the ditches, but it had that corner over there where they pump it out or we could drain out. Roots have filled that up. So, I mean, we just need to redo that track and open it up. I would love for us, if we redid the track, to open it up to the public. So the public would have an, an area after school hours or after practice hours. So they're not there. Anyway, I know, I, I've, I brought this up every year for the last five years, but it never gets put on there. And one section of our track literally has roots growing under the track where it will be a four inch jump. You know how roots will buckle asphalt.
I mean, and, and you and I talked about this. I mean, I don't put in requests from schools.
I don't either, but I mean.
They don't put it forward. I don't.
And I have said this for five years and I'm really.
And you all do track dates out there?
Yes, ma'am. We have about a, they started practice today. So I can't tell you how many kids are out there, but.
Yeah, they don't put it forward.
Well, there's nothing we can do. And I've brought it up every year for at least, what, three or four? Every year. And we probably. Well, I, I had that conversation with Mr. Stribling the other day. Um.
Go back to school, boy.
Well, I mean, anyway. I think for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, we could probably go in there and replace the whole track, redo it, make it like it was forty years ago. And we have something that our county can use, the citizens can use, the kids, students can use, and it's one big word, safe.
I'm assuming they put other items ahead of that.
I, I did. That, that's not even listed.
They didn't submit it. Take two buses.
That's what I'm saying. They did. They put other items ahead.
Yes. They not asked the middle school fee teacher.
So, so, so as far as budget CIP, that's all that we really have to go, go through tonight. I just wanted to give you some a high level overview. If you had additional questions, again, next week's going to be in the weeds and kind of getting into it more and trying to really, you know, well, updates for, for revenues and, and, you know, there may be some little tweaks and changes and expenditures here and there, but that's where we hope that we can start really drilling down on where this budget's going to go.
Knock on wood. I mean, you know, what everything, everybody asked for and everything that's listed there is eighty-eight five. And we can't go eighty-five. We said eighty-six five is as we can go. So we got to find seven hundred thousand dollars, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars from somewhere. To, and CIP is not the place to find it. But anyway, I'm sorry. I got on my soapbox for a second and just. Uh, I just wish we had someplace for our community to access that they pay for.
And if they put it in there, but if we would move it forward.
If they put it in, we would consider it.
Well, we've considered it. Uh, like.
Yeah.
Anyway, I'll stop preaching now. I'm sorry. That's my one, that's my one tangent.
Okay.
I hope they're listening.
Well, you know, we'll all have our annual soapboxes now.
Yeah. They'll all have.
Tax rate.
It's a damn Tony Joe there. I, I, I could say it for you.
And if we want to get out at nine o'clock, it's eight point five.
We're not getting a nice clock. We gotta go to closer.
Oh, that's right. Oh.
If you're done.
That's it back.
Are we done?
I just want to get out of here by.
I, we're done with this, right?
Uh, well, yeah. I, I, I shouldn't say yes. I mean, it's.
Anybody got, anybody?
Well, I'm done.
We consider and beat ourselves up, but we don't even know how much money the state given the school system. We don't know with commissioner revenue, what that taxable valuable, taxable value will be that he comes back and gives us. Cause you know, it's always something. Hopefully it's positive, not negative. If it's negative.
We don't have.
We'll go on a cruise.
You don't have.
Are we ready to go to closing session?
Lab chair, I move that we end our recess and we resume our close session meeting for the purposes of discussing the unfinished items, which are section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A seven and section two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven A nineteen. And the code of duty nineteen fifty, remember for the purposes of discussing litigation, A Plaza LLC versus Fluvana County Board of書 writers and public safety can store firehouses.
Second, please.
Yes.
All right. Motion by Mr. Brian Secondam is for sure. Not in favor.
Okay, I need a second. All right, this is a motion by Mr. Bryant, second by Mrs. Sheridan. They said, Mr. Fairchild. This is Ager.
Aye.
Mr. Bryant.
Aye.
Mrs. Sheridan.
Uh.
And Chairperson.
Aye.
Now we need to extend the meeting.
Twenty percent to ten twenty.
Second.
It is the most, Mr. Bryant, will we expand to ten twenty? Second of them is sure, and all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Chairperson, aye.
Second.
We, we are adjourned.
Oh, we got a vote.
I don't need to take a motion.
All right, so we will let you know about next Wednesday, about, uh.
We'll go up.
Four o'clock.
I'll be a little bit behind. We'll let you know about that, and then we'll get the.
That's, that's plan.
Yes. Well, yes, we'll tell you something, we'll tell you, you don't know. Five thirty. Uh, trust me, I got it, I got it. I'll get to sleep about twelve thirty or one.
What?
I told the principal, if I'm off, if we don't get out of here before midnight, I'm not here.